Okay, good morning, everybody. Sorry for the delay in starting. It's 9:26 a.m., July 9th. We are in the Charlotte Event Center. We're going to do a call to order.
Janice Denton.
Janine Polk.
Greg Julien.
And Melissa Lockhart is missing.
Councilmember Lockhart has expressed that she wouldn't be able to be at the meeting today. She had something come up.
Okay. Carlo? Yes, he's here. We're gonna do the invocation.
Before we pray this morning, let us bow for a moment of silence for all the victims of the Texas floods. Let us pray. Lord, my Savior and King, I know you are our refuge from the storms of life that beat and crash against us. Lord, we weep with those that weep, and we mourn with those that mourn. Father, comfort the moms, the dads, the children, the spouses, as only you can. Lord, you know every tear that has been shed. Please help them feel your strong presence and guide them through these dark moments. Father, please help us show the honor that the deceased loved ones deserve. When there is no one else able, you provide support for us. You are our rock of safety. Support us now, Lord, as we are tired and weary from our struggle. We need your rest. We need your safety. In Joshua 1:8, God commands Joshua, and he commands us. This is my command: Be strong, courageous; do not be afraid; do not be discouraged; for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go. Father, please bless this council, and we pray that the decisions they make today be pleasing to you and the people of Punta Gorda. Lord, bless each family that is represented here today. In the name of our Lord and Savior, we pray. And all of God's people, sit.
Amen. Veterans in the room, you want to remain standing, please, to be recognized and honored? Thank you so much for your service to our country. Do we have any announcements today? Okay, our next meeting is August 20th, 2025, so you have a little break from us for a while here. But I think I can speak on behalf of all of us here that we will still be open to receiving phone calls, messages, meeting with you as well. So it's not like we're just taking a vacation. We're always open for you. Do we have any changes on the agenda? I'm going to, I think Ms. Janice has to leave early, so I'm going to request that we move the burnt store, Punta Gorda Isle Canal Maintenance, and the city of Punta Gorda lot mowing up before the regular agenda, just so that we can have that done right away. So please remind me when it comes to that, that I requested that. But I think that's about it. We're gonna try to plow. There's a lot of stuff here today, so hopefully we can get through it. Please remind me if anybody needs to take a break. Okay, and we'll start out with the service awards.
Okay, we're gonna start with service awards. We are very fortunate to have wonderful employees here at the city of Punta Gorda who work very hard for residents every single day. I'm gonna have Chief Gibbs come up, and he will be giving the first two service awards.
Chief Holden Gibbs. So thank you, guys, for recognizing our employees with these service awards. The first service award I'm gonna recognize is C.W. McLeod. He's receiving a 10-year service award today. So a little bit about C.W. He started his fire career in 2004 as a volunteer firefighter with Maica City Fire Rescue, before he was hired full-time with DeSoto County Rescue in 2010. In July of 2015, 10 years ago, we were able to poach C.W. from DeSoto County, which was a great day for us. He's just a super-great guy. Firefighter McLeod is best known for his positive attitude and charismatic smile, as you guys can see. He has a passion for helping others and goes out of his way to make sure that everyone feels like family. He's the man that will go out of his way and visit a patient in the ER on his way home from work, just to see how they're doing. So he's an amazing paramedic and somebody you would definitely want to see if you ever had to call 911. In 2023, C.W. McLeod was voted Firefighter of the Year by his colleagues for his dedication, leadership, and willingness to go above and beyond the call of duty. He recently tested for lieutenant position and currently ranks next on the list for this position. We look forward to having his service for many more years to come. So thank you very much for your time and service. Our second service award goes to Lieutenant Alex Davenport. He's receiving his 15-year service award here today. A little history about Alex. He's originally from California. Most people don't know that he's a twin. His father was also a firefighter in California. And along with that, Alex's son is following in his footsteps and is a firefighter for Toronto. Mayor Paul wasn't a firefighter?
Oh, no, no.
No, I didn't think so. I couldn't remember. So you can see the family history that's in this service. Alex joined the military soon after high school and was stationed in Washington, D.C. He was a member of the Army's Honor Guard, where he assisted with many funerals of men and women that served our great country. Alex is a natural leader and became a lieutenant in 2017. He also initiated the Punta Gorda Fire Department's first Honor Guard. He leads in their training and drills and does a great job. Alex is Vice President of the Southwest Florida Honor Flight and assists with safely transporting our veterans to Washington, D.C. to be honored at their memorials. And I know he's very proud to be active in that. He takes pride in his service and being a veteran, and we're super-proud of him for everything that he does there. Lieutenant Davenport was also the EMS instructor at Charlotte Technical College, and he continues to mentor new recruits with our volunteers. He has a passion for passing on his knowledge and helping others achieve their goals. Alex is well-known throughout the community and often receives letters and acclamades on how professional and caring he is on his calls. So for everything you do for the department and the city, we thank you for the years of service you've given us.
Everybody always says Alex talks a lot, but I just wanted to say, you know, from my time here, I tell a lot of people that work in the fire service how lucky I feel I was. Most people don't realize I tested with nine departments before we actually got hired, and I got hired in 2010. From 2008 to 2010, we were in a big recession. So I placed first in a lot of those tests, but nobody could hire at the time. And it's a true blessing that the city of Punta Gorda became my home, because meeting the citizens that really, really enjoy our abilities, that we can do the responses that I heard you guys speaking about, and be there for them in their time of need. I never would have thought I'd been as lucky to be able to serve such a great city. And that's basically all I wanted to say. You citizens definitely make this job worth doing through blood, sweat, tears, and every other thing you can think of. We definitely enjoy this job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Ron Edwards, Public Works. Today, I'm here to recognize an individual who's made a significant contribution to the city of Punta Gorda Public Works Department for the past 35 years. This is Nate Larsson. Working for the city for 35 years is a remarkable achievement. Reflecting on how it all began is quite inspiring. Nate started his journey at the city in 1990 at the age of 19. As a young man, he possessed a strong work ethic and a passion for his job, qualities that have not wavered over the years. Nate continues to dedicate his work and strives to perform his best every day. Throughout his career, Nate has worked in several departments, always seizing opportunities for self-improvement when presented. He started out in the canal maintenance division, where he put in nine solid years as service worker, too. After that, he moved into the right-of-way department, where he stayed for 17 years, still showing up, working hard, and doing it all with care and consistency. Then came his time as a crew chief in sanitation. There was another five years of leading by example, helping his team do the things the right way. And for the last four years, Nate's been part of our engineering team as an engineering technician, too. And from everything he's said, it's his favorite role yet. Now that the other jobs didn't matter, they absolutely did, but this one has pushed him in new ways, brought out new strengths, and reminded us all that there's always something more to learn, even after three decades of service. What always stood out about Nate is how reliable he is. No matter the job, no matter the challenge, he shows up, does his best, pays attention to little things that really matter. The kind of dedication is rare, and it makes a huge difference. Outside of work, Nate hit another big milestone in 2015, when he and his wife Rachel welcomed their son Gavin into the world. As a fourth-generation Punta Gorda native, Nate's roots in the community run deep, and now Gavin will carry that legacy forward as part of the fifth generation of Charlotte High Tarpons that will make a positive impact in our community. There's something truly special, that is something truly special and something Nate is very proud of. Nate, you've been the kind of person every city hopes to have on their team, someone who shows up early, works hard, supports others, and quietly gets things done. You've made a real difference here, not just in the projects and departments you've helped build, but with the lives of the people that you've had a chance to work with. So from all of us, we thank you. We appreciate everything you've done. We're lucky to have you, and today we celebrate and recognize your 35 amazing years of service, and hopefully a few more before you retire. I just wanted to make one more note. I noticed this morning that fire had people show up to help support their people. We've got people from Public Works, and it's a real pleasure to work alongside these people who are willing to support each other and do what they can to get the job done.
One more thing I want to thank, Council and interim city manager Melissa Rocker, for recognizing two weeks ago at Council for Ms. Colleen Barber on Mackenzie. She put in a note for me, and thanks for recognizing me two weeks ago. Appreciate that.
Janine Polk is working her way down to recognize Mr. Goldberg.
Today, it is my distinct honor, on behalf of the entire city council and the residents of Punta Gorda, to recognize someone whose name is anonymous with service, leadership, and integrity, Mr. Harvey Goldberg. Harvey has served this city with dedication and distinction for more than 14 years, including six years on the city council, and most recently, eight years on the Planning Commission. His commitment to active participation in local government has left a lasting and positive impact on Punta Gorda. During this time on the Planning Commission, Harvey brought knowledge, professionalism, a steady hand, and dedication to proper procedure. He understood the importance of acting not based on personal opinion, but through objective application of criteria when hearing even the most controversial of applications. Harvey's contributions to the community are not limited to these chambers. He has been a longtime volunteer and leader in our nonprofit community, including his service on the Boards of Directors for the United Way of Charlotte County, Do the Right Thing, Team Punta Gorda, and the former Bayfront Hospital. Harvey, your leadership, your wisdom, and your heart for service have helped shape this city, and we are all better for it. On behalf of the city of Punta Gorda, we extend our deepest appreciation and gratitude for your years of public service and your tireless efforts to make this community the very best it can be. Thank you, Harvey.
Mayor, council members, thank you so much for this humbling recognition. I truly appreciate it. I want to thank the council, this and prior councils, for allowing me the honor and privilege of serving the city. It's been a passion of mine. I left Punta Gorda, and if I have the time and opportunity, that's where I'm gonna spend my time. I also want to thank the wonderful city staff and all the city employees I've had the pleasure of working with over these many, many years. Again, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna go on to public input right now. Those wishing to introduce themselves as nominees for a board or committee may do so at this time. Those who choose to speak must state their name for the record.
Yes, good morning. My name is Teresa Lee, and I reside with the Verandas for the Punta Gorda Housing Authority. I'm here for recommendations to serve on the Board of Commissions, and I believe I'd be a really good advocate and voice for the residents there, as I'm a resident as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Okay, one last call. Those wishing to introduce themselves. Sorry.
Good morning. My name is Richard Kipper. I own Shenango Supply Company here in Punta Gorda. The city and Shenango Supply have had a 45-plus-year relationship going back, and the reason I'm here today is I sent an email June 20th regarding a bid that is currently open for the reinforcement material for the seawalls. That bid was extended because there weren't enough qualified applicants to submit bids for that product. The reason for that is there's only really one manufacturer, CMC out of Jacksonville, that has a small mill that provides the Chromex material that's specified in the waterfront development standards. There is an alternative. The marine industry has progressed over the last few decades, and there are other products that provide similar and/or more advantageous products that are available to the city.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kipper. I think that Ann wanted to say something. We have to be very careful with talking to council members if you're wanting to be part of a bid. So is that correct, Ann?
Yes, that is correct. If you've participated in the bid and supplied a response, there is a contact prohibition with city staff, city council, or anyone other than the authorized contact for that bid until intent to award. Otherwise, you'll be rejected. So if you've participated in that bid response, we would prefer not to reject you.
Okay, so I gotta speak about an alternative product?
If you're talking about, please limit any responses possibly to an alternative product and not anything with regard to the bid or award of the bid, or if you've participated in that process.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
One more thing, please. This right now is for anybody who wants to be on the board. So can I close that out first?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. I did it once, too, so I understand. Anybody else want a position for a board or committee? One last time? Okay, now we have public input.
So marine construction has evolved over the last few decades, and the city, when it originally dug its canals and put up its seawalls, used conventional rebar for the construction of those products. And as we all know, those products have failed over time, because corrosion creeps in through this concrete, gets into the reinforcement, and corrodes it away. We've got top caps that are spalling. We have seawall slabs that are failing when we get hydraulic pressure from the backside during storm events. The city adopted their waterfront development standards, which currently only allows for Chromex bar, which is low-chromian steel, to be used in the construction of the seawalls here in the city of Punta Gorda. And over the decades, there has been advancements in marine construction that have currently been adopted by the Florida Department of Transportation, the city of Cape Coral, but not in the city of Punta Gorda. And all I'm here to do today is to let you know that there is a viable alternative that is 100% corrosion-resistant. There will be no corrosion. It's a one-and-done. So we build the seawalls, we build the slabs, we build the caps, we build the tiebacks out of GFRP, which is glass fiber reinforced product. And for simpler terms, it's fiberglass rebar. It's four times lighter than conventional steel. Therefore, the guys in the field that are working with the mats, that have to go in to the forms for the slabs, are working with the product that's four times lighter. I'm under the impression that you guys are self-insured. That reduces liability right there. All the product can be delivered in the specified dimensions that you guys have in your current waterfront development standards. So there's no cutting, bending, or anything required by the city's city staff. And because it's 100% corrosion-resistant, once the materials go in and those slabs are placed, and the caps are poured, and the tiebacks are put in place, we're not gonna have to look at failures down the line. Not only that, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to talk about the costs, but the costs are significantly less. We have 108 miles, I believe, is the current projected amount of seawall in the city of Punta Gorda that has to be replaced. At five-foot panels, 108 miles, there's about 114,000 slabs that have to be poured and placed to complete that project. There could be probably about $16 million to $17 million worth of savings that the city could save over the length of that project if they were willing to allow for an alternative product to this current product that's being used.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that information.
You're very welcome. And each of you have the specs and the changes. I sent the email on June 20th.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chuck Lewis. I'm a resident of Punta Gorda. I'd like to expand on what that gentleman just said about the seawalls and the fiberglass rebar. He is correct. I don't know if he knows or not, but they are currently using the same rebar in Hall of Inlet. And if you've ever seen the videos of Hall of Inlet, it is violent. So they're not gonna put anything in there for concrete reinforcement that's not gonna hold up. The second thing that's gonna make the mixed design for the seawalls cheaper is that without the metal rebar in the concrete, you do not need CNI. CNI is a chemical additive that's put into concrete. It's a rusted hitter. It keeps the rebar from rusting. Even if you put the coating on a rebar and put it in the rebar, in the concrete, and you encase it in the concrete, and you put it in the saltwater, it'll still get there. So it will rust internally, weakening the seawall. You will not get that with fiberglass. He is right about the fact that the weight is half of what a rebar is, is three times stronger, and it's cheaper. The only offset is that you can't let it set out in the sun until it's put into a form. So once you get that under control and maybe do a test, maybe they can provide some rebar where you can do a test, and then from the test, you can do a compressive break. You do a compressive break, then you could compare the two slabs for their structural integrity. That's just a suggestion. It'd be a cheap fix. It'd be a lot of fun to watch it break up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy O'Hara, Punta Gorda. I know you guys have been dealing with a lot of issues with the hurricane, the floods, and we have, what, three new members that are trying to get up to speed on things? But it's been six months. We're going in seven. When is the water fountains at the playground going to be working? I'm constantly seeing families in there. I take my six-year-old grandson there all the time. They're running around. All of a sudden, the kids are thirsty. They go over to that fountain. The parents take them over, and there's no water. At what point does the water fountain in the playground get fixed? You know? And then my second comment is, month after month after month, I see an interim city manager on the, you know, still acting, or an active acting city manager, whatever. I've been in government for a long time. I have been attending town meetings for like 35 years. I worked at a state Capitol as a researcher for six senators. I'm a former elected public official to a local Board of Finance. I have never seen anything take this long, and I know we've had our setbacks, which has inundated you with a lot of stuff. But month after month after month, seeing that we still don't have a city manager and we're working on an interim, it's just not looking good. I mean, I think that needs to be kind of a priority of wrapping that up. I don't know, I don't have the mayest of time to spend tracking all these things, but these are just two issues that I'm seeing that like needs to be kind of done. Just to say. I don't know if anybody has any comments on where we're at with any of that?
It's on the agenda today.
It is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Lux and council members. Patty Allen, General Manager, Fisherman's Village. Congratulations, Harvey, on your well-deserved award. Not only have you been in government and planning commission, but you've also been a wonderful mentor to me personally. So thank you very much for everything that you do for Punta Gorda. Fisherman's Village had their annual Fourth of July Family Friendly Community Event. My staff does an incredible job preparing for this event each year, and I thank them for always exceeding the community's expectations. However, it's just not my staff I need to thank. I would like to publicly thank the city staff who helped make this day special and safe. Chief Pam Davis and Captain Nahar and the officers, Chief Gibbs and TJ Smith and Izzy, sorry I didn't know Izzy's last name, fire marshals who ensured our safety, Ron and his Public Works team who kept our roads safe. Fisherman's Village and I thank you so very much for all your hard work, your work with my staff seamlessly each time we have an event. It really does take a village, and we look forward to working with you all again on our New Year's Eve fireworks celebration. And thank you very much. And I wish they were here still, but thank you very much.
Bill Page, resident of Punta Gorda and a candidate for council. It was with a lot of pride that I watched and have watched the county officials and the city officials work together, especially the police and the fire. I had an opportunity to go to the Citizens Academy and talk with county officials on specific things that I thought I might be able to bring back to help the city, and they cooperated real well with me. Unfortunately, I didn't see that this morning, and you guys up there, there was really a lack of respect from the county commissioners. You asked questions, and it was crickets. And sitting back there, at the end, I wanted to get up and just call them all out. And I hope that somehow we can improve the communications at the top levels because down below, they're getting it right. Thank you.
Good morning, Kathleen Davis, PGI. I just want to give a public, ordinary member of the public, Joe Blow, evaluation of our interim city manager because I read the evaluations online. And I just want to say, as a member of the public, what we observe, we observe that she's doing the job of two people with grace and service and dignity. And the hurricanes, Helene and Milton, that she had to cover, I believe that the streets were closed in a more timely manner. Everything was taken care of very well as opposed to before that. And so I want to give her a very good evaluation from the members of the public. Thank you very much.
Hello, council. My name is Niles Higgins. Excuse me. My wife is a member of the Code Enforcement Board, and recently she received an email from a disgruntled citizen on her private email address about an incident that took place in Punta Gorda Isles. Now, I'm not going to debate the merits of this case that's been ongoing with these neighbors. My problem is that my wife and everybody that works on a board in this city is a volunteer. They don't get paid. Of all the years that my wife was a judge, her personal email and address was never violated on a federal level. I know that they fill out these financial disclosure forms. I suppose that that is available to the public. I don't know how this person got my wife's email and the other members of the board's email, but it can't happen. If you look back at what happened in Minnesota, that's the last thing we need to have here. So my suggestion is, the first thing is maybe to give everybody on these boards a city email address. So that is public. And then maybe that these forms that they're filled, they're required to fill out by the state, the information should be redacted as to their address and their email. I can go on the county website and get all of your addresses in a matter of minutes. You're all vulnerable.
I know.
You're here doing a service. You probably work for 15 cents an hour when you figure it all out. And you should not have to, you know, your information should not be public. Unless somebody has a right to know and they go through channels to get that information, it should not be available to just anybody that wants to get on a computer. Thank you.
Michael, first of all, I have to correct my testimony from this morning. My friend did die on the softball field, but due to there being a RN on the field next to him, next to us, they resuscitated him while we waited nine minutes for EMS to get there. And I, again, I want to reiterate, our system's not broke, so we don't need to fix it. In regard to the interim city manager, Melissa Reichert, you know, you were thrown into the fire, and I think you've done an excellent job. You moved the city forward. You obviously have the confidence of your employees, and I've heard from reliable sources that you love the city of Punta Gorda. So if I'm making the decision, I wouldn't waste the $50,000 or whatever I have to pay to hire someone to tell us who we need to hire. You know, if I was the athletic director and my coach quit on me before the bowl game and my assistant coach stepped up and won the bowl game, I'd hire the assistant coach. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Lustig. And I just wanted to also say that our city manager is excellent. She's answered all my questions. She's been very patient with me, and I think she's doing a great job. Thank you very much.
I'm just talking to myself on my way up here. Wendy Mueller. It went through my head just a few minutes ago that we should ask the county, the commissioners, the arrogant commissioners, if they can meet our standards for response time or take our instruction on how to do that properly, maybe we could combine forces and be better for all four or five counties. Just a thought that they need to raise their bar. The other thing that's occurred to me, and I wasn't going to say anything because it looks like the writing's on the wall for hiring another management company to do something we already have in front of us and is known. But is it walk softly and speak softly and carry a big stick? Is that?
Yes.
Is that? It's kind of close. Well, I'm loud, I'm abrupt, and I usually think or speak before I think. It's a refreshing moment in time to have a leader of a city that's respected by its employees, so much so they're smiling, they're coming to work, and they like what they're doing, and they don't seem to be brow-beaten anymore. That's so nice. Why do we have to hire somebody to tell us what's in front of us?
Robert Davis. I'd just like to say I'm originally from Miami, now from Punta Gorda Isles. And I have seen many national searches go on, a lot of money being spent, bringing people down, and then it turned out to be absolute disasters, you know? You know, did we have a, I wonder if we had a national search to find Greg Murray, you know? And what I'm thinking is that if we have somebody and the city is running efficiently, should we be looking for somebody else? Because people are people. We're just going to replace one person with another. If we have a good person right now, let's keep that person and don't expose ourselves to the dangers of bringing somebody else here. Thank you.
We've got Don coming up.
Morning, Don Hurlston. I got fired from a job once and rehired six months later. Asked the owner, why'd you hire me back? He goes, you're a known quantity. He goes, you did a pretty good job. We have a known quantity in front of us. I think we should take advantage of it. It's not why I'm here to speak today. A couple of years ago, news media picked up on the collapse of John Larmour's real estate Ponzi scheme. I spoke in front of city council at that time. I urged and suggested that they hire outside legal counsel to represent the city on all matters Fisherman's Village. I understand it's on today's agenda for discussion. I think that there's going to be a point that is brought up regarding what is referred to as force majeure. It's one of the very first things listed in the First Amendment to Acquisition Agreement dated all the way back in 2015, late 2016. And this is a pretty important situation that we're facing. And I'm going to go to the very end of this document where it refers to assignment. And it refers to John Larmour as the buyer, and it states, buyer may assign this agreement only, and I emphasize only, to affiliates of John Larmour. For the purpose of this paragraph 29, an affiliate of the buyer is any entity in which the buyer owns 51% or more of the voting stock of the entity in a corporation or if the entity is more than, other than a corporation. An entity from which the buyer is entitled to 51% of the law of the shares. Profits or similar economic benefit from the entity. In other words, John Larmour is the only one who can retain control of those parcels, and it was provided for in a 99-year lease. We own that land. Any future buyer needs to come back to the city unless it just happens to be John Larmour, which isn't going to happen, and start from scratch. 99-year lease is not a good idea. Two very important reasons why. During Hurricane Milton, with good cause, under proper procedures, wastewater was released into the harbor. A future engineering study might be able to correct that situation so it never happens again if we have land nearby. We haven't even begun a flooding study. That flooding engineering might come back and say, with a pumping station nearby, we might be able to hold back some water and divert it somewhere if we have the land. New owners of Fisherman's Village need as much parking as they can get. The more parking, the more business. The more business, better for the city. But allowing this 99-year lease at some figure that was developed back in 2016 is out of economic reality. So I hope as this discussion develops, you will foul the contract that was written by the city to protect its residents. We have no reason or obligation to make banks whole, lenders whole, and divert our money to John Larmour, correcting John Larmour's mistakes. The city of Punta Gorda shouldn't be making investors whole that are in a shopping center in Belleville, Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Do we have anybody else who wants to speak?
Hello, council. I am here to request council consent to read into the record a public comment submitted by Mr. Gary Skellicorn pertaining to Agenda Item 6N.
Yes.
Yes, that's mine.
Okay, excellent. All right. 6N is regarding the CDBIA proposed lease in the AC Freeman House. Mr. Skellicorn writes, "Lacking my usual control, I expressed my disappointment at the June 18th council meeting that there wasn't consideration to other options in lieu of the quick move to accept a verbal presentation by the Builders Association. It appears there was no vote taken. My thoughts reflect not only the current 2025 situation, but I go back to previous discussions with one or more prior city councils. Serious discussions ended in the same question: How are we going to use it and pay the bills? And is there an organization that will take over full responsibility and not be a burden on the city? That still influences my discussion. Discussions were, well, maybe we could do X, Y, or Z, although none pay the bills and do require city labor. What should be our endgame? Seeing the difficulty and expense, I have been an advocate for repurposing the AC Freeman House to private ownership as a residence. It is a beautiful Queen Anne-style architecture home that represents Punta Gorda of the past and needs to be retained. Being on the historical register assures its future does not need to be tied to city ownership. We know the difficulties the city has faced with owned properties, for example, Herald Court. Based on the presentation by the Builders Association on June 18th, I understood the city is considering investing $400,000 in renovations to be performed by the Builders Association. But for what end purpose? There is no business plan, just good intentions. Maybe we can have an office for council members, provide guided tours, rent as an Airbnb, or rent it out for social events. The prior city council had the same thoughts and unanswered questions. To be more functional, it may require improvements such as an upstairs bathroom, fire suppression, a more functional kitchen, and an elevator. Remember, it's far from being ADA compliant and that limits use. At what additional cost for such improvements? What would be the cost of yearly maintenance by the city workers? Landscape care, regular maintenance, utilities, and likely storm effects? Private ownership as a residence would assure continued maintenance and retain the historic element. I contend a sale for a residence would be a win-win for the city and Punta Gorda residents. An immediate expenditure savings of $400,000 would be gained, as well as negating the cost of continuous maintenance to be funded by the taxpayers. What would be lost? I contend nothing. We can have our cake and eat it too. Our major end goal should be the same, that is, to retain the AC Freeman House as an historic landmark of Punta Gorda, reflecting architecture and culture of earlier times. Private ownership as a residence or by an organization would only improve the likelihood of an extended future for the home that cannot be assured as a city asset. Sale proceeds would certainly aid in the city budget issues." There is about a page and a half left. Would council like to hear the rest? It will be part of the record in terms of the written comments, so effectively that is Mr. Skellicorn's comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on. There is no public hearing agenda. So the next on the item is 4A. Mr. Lescovich.
Title GA-04-2025, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida Amending Chapter 11 of the Punta Gorda City Code, Prens City Code. The City of Punta Gorda Development Impact Fee Ordinance, Providing Findings, Intent, and Revised Definitions, Providing for waiver of applicability for certain affordable housing, Providing for imposition of impact fees, Providing for calculation of impact fees and establishing new impact fee schedules for parks, mobility, and public facilities effective as of October 1st, 2025, Effective as of October 1st, 2026, Effective as of October 1st, 2027, and effective as of October 1st, 2028. Amending impact fee trust funds, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date and time. This is the second reading.
Does anybody need staff to talk about this?
Yeah, Greg, Julian, I'd like to, for the benefit of the community, understand just a brief explanation of why we talked about this, why the items that are on the list were on the list in 2019, and what funds were collected and where did they go.
Correct. Christmas in the Home Finance Director. So some of the projects are still on the list from the prior impact fee study. And they are still on the list because we had multiple projects. And so those impact fees collected during that time could be used for any of those projects that were deemed appropriate. We have not collected, at the time when they had the last study, they did estimate a higher volume of impact fees coming in that we did not see. So the current impact fees that we do have accumulated are currently scheduled for the nature park project as well as the Henry Street property improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was decided by who for Henry Street property improvements?
By city council when we had discussion about the projects and the various funding sources that could be used to that. And again, anything that could use multiple sources and not just all 1% sales tax was using some of the impact fees.
Okay, I don't recall us, and I apologize, I don't recall us agreeing upon that. And I thought I brought something up on that effect. So I'll talk to you later about that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve 4A?
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next for B, Mr. Lescovich.
The resolution of the City Council of Punta Gorda, Florida, finding that Florida law preempts Chapter 26 of the City Code of Ordinances, declaring Chapter 26, Prens, Ordinance 2012-2023 null and void ab initio, directing the city clerk or designated notified MuniCode Corporation of the Ordinances' invalidity, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Discussion? Was that no break? I'm sorry.
I have that.
Okay.
Move to approve 4B? Janine?
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Can we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. 4C?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, reestablishing, appointing members to, and providing bylaws for the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission, providing for an effective date.
Do you have any discussion on this?
I was probably not as surprised as Harvey was to find his name on the new board, or the old board that we're recreating. How were those determined?
Do you want, go ahead.
If city council would like, I could speak to that. Jennifer Faulkner, Deputy City Clerk for the record. So the city clerk's office put this draft resolution together based on the original timeline that council had indicated for the repeal ordinance that was just passed. And we spoke to the current planning and zoning board members about this switch to gain a consensus about, you know, whether or not they would be amenable to this change. Just to backstep a couple of steps and give a brief history. So with the adoption of Ordinance 2012-2023, which implemented the now repealed version of Chapter 26, one of the changes was that the two separate boards, Board of Zoning Appeals, or BZA, and Planning Commission, they were combined into a single board known as the Planning and Zoning Board, PZB. So given the recent repeal of Chapter 26 and reverting to the former Chapter 26, that Planning and Zoning Board ceased to exist because it was not part of the former Chapter 26, and we had to go back to the two separate boards. At the time, again, given the original timeline of the LDR repeal ordinance, there was a pending appeal item that would have needed to be heard by a valid board, which under the now current version of Chapter 26 would have been the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we proposed, for the sake of having a valid board in place when that appeal was ready to be heard, to appoint the current Planning Commission members to PZB, or excuse me, to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission, given their familiarity and experience with public hearings, board procedures, and to make sure that when that appeal did come before a board, that there was a valid board in place to hear that, to be in compliance with Chapter 26. So that was kind of the rationale behind all of that. And you will see in the resolution the membership makeup. Because Mr. Goldberg is now turned out on the, what would have been the Planning Commission, but since we're reverting now back to two separate boards, he is still eligible to be appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals because we're essentially taking Planning and Zoning Board, calling that Planning Commission, and reestablishing the Board of Zoning Appeals as a separate board. And then for further clarification, the resolution cites, this is just for initial appointments to this board. And then obviously, as subsequent terms come up, those will be filled per the city's usual board appointment, application, nomination procedures.
Thank you.
Sure.
The way I'm reading it is in number five that Mr. Goldberg is not on the reestablished Planning Commission. I see the names here, but he is not on it for the reestablish.
Correct, yes. That is because he has turned out of that.
Exactly.
But he is still eligible, excuse me, to be appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Do you need something else, Greg? Okay. The other thing that I would like to bring forward too is with the, it talks about our bylaws for this. And I mentioned this at the last council meeting. I think we need to just have five people instead of seven. So respectfully, Mr. Goldberg, you have turned out. I don't see that we should be reappointing you again. That's my personal opinion, just because we have determined we've got other people who want to come on. But I would like to make a recommendation that we go from seven to five board members and only one alternate. And right now also, I think with some issues that have been happening with the last meeting that occurred, I think that we do have some issues. And I think that there is possibly, can I say that, Mr. Lescovich?
It has really nothing to do with the resolution. It may be for
But it kind of
council comments at the end.
Okay. So I think right now what we have to make a motion on is if we're going to accept this with number five as these are the people right now temporarily in place.
I move to approve 4C.
And then also to go from seven to five?
Can we make that motion now? Yes. And also to go from seven members to five members?
With one alternate.
With one alternate.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion.
And if you could just briefly, before you take your vote, I just want to confirm that I understand what council's direction is in terms of the bylaw revision. So you are, the motion, Councilmember Denton, that you are making and that you, Mr. Julian, seconded, was to have both the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission have five regular members and one alternate. And then are you, if you would, for clarification in your, in your motion, if you would just list for the initial appointments to those boards, the names of the board members, so we have that very clearly for the record.
Does anybody have those handy?
I do.
Could you read them up on my behalf?
These are the members that are
So those members include Tony Gray, Heather
And this is, I'm sorry, for which board are you starting with? The Board of Zoning Appeals or the Planning Commission?
I think they're the same on both.
That was Planning and Zoning Board that you're reading from?
Okay. Heather Knufke, Charles Lewis, Patrick, Patrice Petrick, Jean Reinders, Robert Siffert, James Wilton.
That's seven people.
Oh, that's seven?
Yes, ma'am.
So we have
So we have to decide five unless we said
If your, if your motion is that you would like to make the makeup of the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission, five regular members and one alternate, then I need six names, five regulars and one alternate.
So we need to discuss which five we want to keep on and which one we're going to take off?
Yes.
Proceed, procedurally, the proper avenue is as an individual is turned out, you don't fill the position.
Correct. And we have one that's turned out.
So if you have one that's turned out, procedurally, you would have to keep these seven on there. And for example, I'm just going to throw a name out that is due to expire August 8, 2027. Actually, let me go to Robert Siffert, who's due to expire July 5, 2026. And that's just hypothetically speaking, that position just wouldn't be filled.
Correct.
So then you would be down to six. And then as the next one comes up, you wouldn't fill it. Procedurally, I don't believe you can just say, we're going to pick five out of these seven names right now. It would just be, we want to amend the resolution to get to five people as the two earliest ones are turned out, they just don't get filled.
All right, so 4C, including the aforementioned people, which will be turned out down to five regulars and one alternate. Does that make?
Yes.
Does that work? Okay. So motion, put forward.
Still okay, Greg?
Yes, I see.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, three to one.
So then I apologize again, just for clarification for the clerk's office as we make these notifications. So you are for the initial appointment, so essentially as of tomorrow, the BZA and the Planning Commission are reestablished as directed under the current version of Chapter 26 with the members listed on the resolution. And then as folks turn out on those two boards, you would like the membership at that point reduced to the five regular and one alternate. Is that accurate?
So I think what we're trying to say is we were going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So BZA, in my interpretation, that that one was being eliminated, we were going back to the Planning and Zoning again. And that's where we're eliminating the people. So if we have to change our terminology from the building, BZA, to the Planning and Zoning, that's probably the smartest and most accurate way to do it.
Okay, so that would require a change to the, an ordinance change to Chapter 26 because the version of Chapter 26 that we've reverted back to includes a Board of Zoning Appeals and a Planning Commission. So for purposes of this resolution, those two boards will be reestablished. And I just wanted to make sure that tomorrow, essentially, are we telling the people that were listed on the resolution that they're now appointed to those boards? And then as those folks turn out, we are just not filling those positions to reduce the membership to five regular and one alternate? Is that accurate? Or are you asking that as of tomorrow, the boards only have five regular members and one alternate?
I think Mr. Lescovich said we had to, like, let them turn out to go to five.
Okay. So I just wanted to make that clear.
It seems like it's the same people on the BZA as the Planning Board.
It is, yes.
Exactly. And with Mr. Goldberg, his term is finished in the Planning Zone, so he would just be the one eliminated from the BZA as well.
Okay, so then just to confirm, the membership for the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission as of tomorrow will be Tony Gray, Heather Knufke, Charles Lewis, Patrice Petrick, Jean Reinders, Bob Siffert, and James Wilton.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I apologize, but thank you for that clarification.
No, thank you for clarifying that.
And Madam Clerk, just for clarification from the legal standpoint, when Patrice Petrick and Robert Siffert, when they turn out, those seats would not be filled?
We will make, we will make note of that, and we will bring a revised draft of the bylaws once those turnouts occur, so that it's clear when that membership change is effective.
Thank you so much. Okay, anybody want to pull anything on the consent agenda? No? Okay. Motion?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You're going real fast, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'd like to pull the attorney's bill.
Okay.
Nothing against you.
That's all right.
Okay, with the exception of 5A, can we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent agenda minus 5A, which I pulled.
So a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. I spoke.
Okay, Janine Cole for the record. I would just like to ask a question about your meeting with Mr. Levin. And just for the record, what was your meeting? What did that, what did that pertain to?
Are you talking about the May 16th?
Yes.
2025 hearing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
There was myself and a couple of members of the city who met with Mr. Levin. He had sent a letter to the city indicating that Icard Merrill and he himself, by and through Icard Merrill, were representing Gettle Automotive. As a, as a direction from that, we met on the third floor of the administration building. And Mr. Levin had indicated their client, Gettle, wanted to, I'm not sure if it's behind the Chevy dealership or behind one of the dealerships there going southbound on 41, wanted to raise a vacant piece of land roughly four to five feet. There were discussions how they would have to modify the retention pond or move it in order for drainage and everything else. But as you can see here, I put on here, prepare for and attend meeting regarding LDRs and Gettle with David Levin. Mr. Levin made it a point to remind the city that the current LDRs at that time were more restrictive or more burdensome on Gettle. And as a result of that, they wanted permission from the city to utilize the previous LDRs, or Gettle was contemplating litigation. So we have heard in prior council meetings, you know, possible litigation or whatever it may be regarding LDRs. So before that was the discussion Mr. Levin presented to us. There was four of us sitting there, and Mr. Levin included, so he became the fifth. And for the first 20 minutes, he and I had a discussion on a conflict of interest he would have in that if Gettle decided to file suit, that we would vigorously oppose Icard Merrill representing Gettle as a result of Mr. Levin's direct representation of the city in regards to the implementation of the LDRs that went into it. He was of the opinion that He was of the opinion that there was no conflict of interest because he had never read the LDRs that were being implemented and that he was never asked to read the LDRs that were being implemented and continued to believe that there would be no conflict of interest with his firm, specifically he himself representing Gettle. Now, although it was just a discussion, we still entertained listening to him in regards to what Gettle was seeking or what they wanted to do.
Sure.
So that was the nature of the conversation, myself and the other three members of staff. I was asked to be there naturally because it involved a legal implication or possible litigation that could be coming down the pipeline. But I'd say the bulk of the conversation was from Mr. Levin, who showed photos and diagrams and everything else. And we listened to what Gettle had to say.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Greg Julian, is the need to raise the elevation of the property not a FEMA or a state code? Or is it specifically in the previous Chapter 26?
If I'm not mistaken, Councilman Julian, the, the way the discussion went was the current, I'm going to, I'm going to call them the 22s and the 24 LDRs, just for simplistic reasons. The 22 LDRs permitted Gettle to raise the land, the vacant lot roughly four to five feet. They wanted to do so because when the hurricanes came through, that area apparently flooded, which damaged some of their cars they had stored there. The 24 LDRs did not permit them to do so, to raise the land.
Does it make any sense?
It, it made no sense to me. It was something myself and staff were going to look into, or staff was, and get back to the powers that be. It was not discussed whether it was a state or a FEMA matter. It was, I'd say 90% of the conversation, excluding the possible conflict of interest in matters regarding that, were regarding, you know, why they felt that the 24 LDRs were more restrictive on Gettle than wanting to raise that land.
Thank you for that. And, and I do want to thank you too. This, I really enjoy how thorough you are in what you say. Thank you very much for that. I think all of us agree on that.
Yes, appreciate the detail. Thank you so much.
We are going to go to closing. Oh, did we approve that? Did we approve it in a second? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Luskovich, 5A, we need to approve.
Move to approve 5A.
Second out, Janice.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're going to go ahead and close the regular agenda, and we're going to go to Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I had informed you guys Monday, I have court on behalf of the city at 10:45.
Yes, sir.
And it's done by Zoom. I don't think you need me for that hearing on the PSI.
We've got three.
So if it's okay, I'm going to step out, attend the Zoom meeting, and I'll be back when it's done.
Do you want us, is, do you want to take a quick break?
I mean, it would take, I think, because the court hearing is scheduled for 15 minutes. I mean, unless you need me here for that.
Does anybody need a break?
I do, I do.
I, I don't find a taking a break. Is it okay, we're going to take a 15, 10 to 15 minute break? We'll do it real quick. And if you're not here, we'll just go ahead and get started without him. Okay, great. Long day today, so if we can go ahead and, and come back again?
Thank you.
Especially since we have a time restraint for one of our council members, it would be really good for us to take as much done as we can. Okay, so we are, we've closed the regular agenda, and we have opened Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment.
Good morning, Kristen Simeone, Finance Director. The, I'll read the title. "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, Adopting a Tentative Levy of Annual Special Assessment for the Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for Fiscal Year 2025-2026, Setting a Date, Time, and Place of Public Hearing to Consider Final Adoption of the Assessment and Providing an Effective Date." So this resolution does authorize the property appraiser to send out notices to the property owners reflecting the tentative special assessment and to notify property owners of the date, time, and place of the public hearing to set the final special assessment. The tentative annual assessment for PSI Canal Maintenance Assessment District is $1,010 per single-family residence, which represents a $25 change from fiscal year 2024-2025. For all of the properties, the assessment is 10, um, 10 and 5, it's 10 cents and 5 tenths cents per square foot of land lying less than 120 lineal feet from the seawall. The public hearing to consider the final adoption of the special assessment will be held on September 10, 2025, at 5:01 PM at the Lashley Community Room, 120 Lashley Court, Unit 111, Pontagorda, Florida.
Any discussion? Need a motion?
Motion to approve 7A.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We're going to go ahead and close the Burnt Store Isle Canal Maintenance, and we are going to open the Pontagorda Isles Canal Maintenance.
Okay, I'll read the title again. "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, Adopting a Tentative Levy of Annual Special Assessment for the Pontagorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District for Fiscal Year 2025-2026, Setting a Date, Time, and Place of Public Hearing to Consider the Final Adoption of the Assessment and Providing an Effective Date." So again, this will put the information on the trim with a tentative special assessment and notify owners of the public hearing information. The tentative annual special assessment for PGI Canal Maintenance Assessment District is $1,350 per single-family lot, which represents an increase of $150 from fiscal year 2024-2025. For all of the properties, the assessment is 14 and 1 tenth cents per square foot of land lying less than 120 lineal feet from the seawall. The public budget hearing to consider the final adoption of the special assessment will be held on September 10, 2025, at 5:01 PM at the Lashley Community Room, 120 Lashley Court, Unit 111, Pontagorda, Florida.
Any discussion? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve 8A.
A second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Great, we're going to go ahead and close the Pontagorda Isles Maintenance, and we're going to open City of Pontagorda Lot Mowing Assessment District.
Again, the title is "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Pontagorda, Florida, Adopting a Tentative Levy of Annual Special Assessment for the City of Pontagorda Lot Mowing Assessment District for Fiscal Year 2025-2026, Setting a Date, Time, and Place of Public Hearing to Consider Final Adoption of the Assessment and Providing an Effective Date." The proposed resolution sets the tentative levy for the mandatory lot mowing program assessment at $285 and authorizes the property appraiser to include this information on the trim. The tentative special assessment rate and public hearing notice for the final special assessment. This tentative assessment is the same as the previous year. A public hearing to consider the final adoption of the special assessment will be held September 10, 2025, at 5:01 PM at the Lashley Community Room, 120 Lashley Court, Unit 111, Pontagorda, Florida.
Any questions?
No questions.
I don't have a, a question or, or anything, but it does relate to this. I know that we've got to be very, very careful. Even the people we've hired and even as residents, we've got to stop putting the grass clippings into our canals, and we've got to be very careful. So I don't know if there's any way, when we do contracts with them, saying that they have to have the bags on to catch it and the blowers don't just blow and, and go into our canals. We need to protect our environment. But I just wanted to say that that has nothing to do with the approval of this. I just wanted this on record, that maybe we can consider putting that in contract. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 9A.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to go ahead and close the City of Pontagorda Lot Mowing, and we're going to reopen our regular agenda, and we will start with 6A.
Let's see. Can you put that up on the screen? Thank you. We did have this as a budget workshop, so we do have the information, and we have the recommendation from the Utility Advisory Board. But we'll try to go through it quickly, but if you do have any questions, feel free to ask, and we'll go over any of those. So the first pro forma is the Utilities Construction Fund. And again, we show the transfers from the Operations Fund, estimated grants for subject to sewer, estimated financing for several projects, including subject to sewer, AMI equipment, the RO expansion, and the filtration project at the water treatment plant. And then you have the expenditures. And again, they're divvied up by the type of infrastructure, whether it's at the water plant, water distribution, wastewater collection, wastewater treatment, subject to sewer or non-departmental for, that was a master plan update project. So going on, you can see the annual recurring projects of approximately 1.1 million for R and R projects. And then we go into the five-year capital outlay for other projects. And again, we brought up some of the ones that had increases, such as the project for the filtration at the water treatment plant, as well as the RO expansion project. They had increased, and I think Tom had talked to you about that previously. Are there any specific projects you wanted to go over?
Kristen, I, I think it'd be really good for you to explain how it, you know, we have the prior year fundings, and then for the fiscal years, why some of them have zeros on it? You know, like, why is it all in one area and how, how it's calculated?
Sure. So prior year fundings are, we try to include projects that aren't complete yet, so that's why we do have the prior year's funding, and then you don't have any future years because the project is still being completed. And we want you to be aware of that because we do bring those funds forward into the next fiscal year.
And so, like, when you're looking at fiscal year '26 and '27, it's, they both have 1.35. People are asking, why don't we extend that amount and, you know, over into the other, the future years?
I think that's the timing of the project. So again, this is a project that they're trying to move forward on, so already trying to have it over multiple years. If you try to extend it out, then that project might not get completed in the timeframe that they're looking to get it completed. And Tom is here, if you need to talk to him about any of the specific projects.
But we're taking out, like, financing for these, so it actually will be over the years. It's just to pay for these projects is what it's going to be during here. I think that's it.
Correct. But like, say, on that specific one you were looking at, that one is not a finance project. That one was going to come from the Utility Operations Fund, but some of the larger projects did require financing.
And on, not on this page, but I'm going to bring it up. And I wanted to actually bring it up this morning with our commissioners. And I know that they said no, no, no to the subject to sewer, but I'm sorry, for our environment, it's not fair for the burden of the City of Pontagorda residents to take on subject to sewer, and I think it needs to be a joint mission with our commissioners as well. And so it, it bothers me that we're looking at, you know, a huge amount. I, I know we have the one grant for it, but the extra over $10 million for it, I think we really need to, to have a discussion with our commissioners.
I agree, and it is in the county that, that we're having to accomplish this subject to sewer, so I would like to have that discussion also.
Yes, ma'am.
I have reiterated with Mr. Flores this morning that our city council desires a meeting. Some of the topics to include, as Councilmember Polk mentioned, derelict vessels. I've also had mentioned to me from our city council members, the idea of the more, moving mooring along, that the county can actually implement, and then we could implement within the city limits, subject to sewer, the subject of Baynard. So the, Mr. Flores, again, is aware of the, of the request to have a meeting with them, same basic request with the addition of one new item that we provided back in January. So hopefully, he'll be able to get some traction with the commissioners to get that scheduled.
And I do want to point out with subject to sewer, the plan does also need some grant funding as well. So the division continues to look for grant funding for that project.
Again, this is a burden to our staff, looking for these things, when it should be a joint effort with our county helping us find these grants and everything. And I did bring that up to Mr. Dougherty, and he said that Mr. Flores and you are the two who decide it coming here. And I tried to tell him, I, I didn't think, listening to him, that that wasn't the case. So thank you for reaching out to Mr. Flores again.
I, I watched the 2023 meeting, it was a joint meeting with the city and the county, commissioners, and they had agreed to establish an MSBU to help pay for things. And, and then we were going to take care of the rest. And I asked this morning, was that MSBU established? And it was not, because the city wasn't moving forward with any project.
That is, that's not actually the case. They agreed to place it on the tax roll, so to actually create the MSBU, but that does not provide any funding for the project. All that does is, would be to allow the city to place that on the tax roll.
So that the, the citizens are, the, the county residents that would be getting that, they would have it spread over 20 years on their tax roll? It was, is what they mean by the MSBU?
And that, at that time, so just a couple of years back, that was looking like it would be over $35,000 per resident that would have to be charged if we moved forward on subject to sewer at this time.
Even more now.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Kristen, question?
Sure.
Are we, how are we doing with grants for RO expansion and other things like that? Because we're kind of counting on some of that.
Yes, we are, continue to submit grants. You know, we did submit the one, and then that funding went away. We have just submitted a total of five more grant requests, some for the RO, one for the List Station 30, I believe, subject to sewer. So, and, and that particular grant is related to Helene and Milton, so we're hoping we'll have some funding come from there. But it was just due June 30, and then we have to also submit some additional paperwork that they've requested, and we'll continue to move forward on those grant requests. And then it takes some time for them to determine which projects they're going to fund.
I do have to say, I am so impressed with our staff, finding these things and running immediately, trying to get these grants secured. So thank you so much. You know, I, I know Richard also, I mean, I've never seen a staff member so enthusiastic about their job, being excited finding grants. And, and I just want to do a shot, is Richard in here? Just want to do a shout out. You guys are all amazing with finding the stuff.
Any other questions on capital projects? I can go to the next slide. So this was more of the wastewater side. The next slide was more of the water projects. Got on the projects, okay. So then we'll move on to the operations fund. And again, we are proposing, this is the pro forma, and we'll kind of go over the assumptions that we have for this pro forma and how we have, what the rates look like over the five year and the expenditures. So for revenue assumptions, we do have a proposed rate increase of 12% in fiscal year '26, and estimated increases of 12% through fiscal year '29, and then an estimate of 5% in fiscal year 2030. Again, that's to fund debt service on significant CIP projects. These will be reviewed every year, and in August, our consultant will be coming to you with the presentation for the rate increases from their analysis. So the rate study was updated with the updated CIP plan, and it will be presented to the UAB in July and to city council at your first August meeting. For fiscal year '26- For fiscal year 26 through 2030, we do estimate at least a half a percent growth, and we use averages to account for consumptions due to variations that happen every year, whether it's rainfall, watering restrictions, things like that. So we use an average. Water and wastewater impact fees can fluctuate widely, and you'll see that on the next slide. But they are also included in the rate study and will be brought to you as part of the presentation from the consultant. We do use estimated lower revenues in fiscal year 26, just assuming some slower growth. And then on the next slide, let's see here. So you can see how, over the years, the water and rate wastewater impact revenues come in. So for fiscal year 25, they're actually doing very well. But you can see in fiscal year 23, we were very slow. We don't wanna get caught too far behind, so we do, again, use averages and use a little bit lower in fiscal year 26.
It's really unique, because you look at it and, you know, water is way high, wastewater is low. It just, it, there's no pattern to it, it's just very unique.
Right. It just depends on when a developer comes online. And sometimes it could be in a different year. I mean, it could be a slower growth year, but that developer just happens to come online that particular year. Other revenue assumptions, um, we do use water impact fees for partial debt service on the RO project, because again, a portion of that project was growth-related. Fiscal year 27 through 2030, we would estimate that the wastewater impact fee transfer for the partial debt on our wastewater treatment plant improvement project will begin. Fiscal year 28 through 30, we do estimate annual assessments and new wastewater revenue for subject to sewer project, Area 1. So again, if that project gets delayed or pushed out, those would also get pushed out. Again, the expense and the revenue. On the expense side, we've, again, we use the same percentage increases, so I won't bore you with that again. The operating, we have department requests, we're mostly flat. Computer overhead was 3%, administration charges 3%, as we talked about before. The final is determined once all our budgets are in place, and then we do an allocation. General liability insurance estimates 8%. And then when we get to fiscal year 27 through 30, we just use our standard 3% increases, except general liability insurance at 5%. So the things we do wanna point out are the meter reading contract, right now is $275,000 per year, until we get a new AMI system. The valve maintenance program is $225,000. That's a one-time expenditure that was requested. Wellfield management consulting is $100,000 per year. So originally, this was in the capital improvement plan, but it's an annual cost, so it really should be in operating going forward. The nutrient management plan is $60,000 per year. And sludge hauling, due to a rule change in the sludge application, is $200,000 per year.
Is there gonna be a time that we're gonna talk about the AMI system? Like, when we're, you know, so that we can get the meter reading contracts done? If we're gonna have automatic meter readings again? Is that not to be brought up today, but?
Yeah.
Tom Spencer, utilities director, for the record. We're still working on the AMI study. The estimate that was included in the budget is just that. It's an estimate, engineer's opinion of cost. That should tighten up as we move forward with that study. And then the reading contract that we have for the $235,000 per year, that'll go away if and when we do go back to an AMI.
When and what, that study should be done pretty soon, correct?
Should be done September, October.
Awesome. That'd be great to hear that, because we need to get that fixed, like yesterday. Awesome. Thank you, Tom.
So other costs that were over the flat, um, amount from the prior year was in the water treatment plant, chemical costs, because they have continued to see increases due to the cost and higher use and operations. In most of the divisions, the repair and maintenance of increases due to aging fleet equipment, there was cost increases even in the costs of doing those repairs. And newer equipment just has not been as reliable as in the past. Water treatment plant material and supplies for sand needed for drying beds. In the wastewater treatment plant, the field improvements increased of $50,000 for application of line due to low pH in soils. In water distribution, training increased for CDL licenses. And we kinda talked about that when we talked about the general fund, because the CDL costs have gone up to get those licenses.
Can I, can I ask you a question? I, I thought we were having trouble. I know even with the fire department, once, you know, you train somebody, sorry, chief. But, you know, once you train somebody, and I think this is what I've heard, is we go through all the spending, we pay for them, and then all of a sudden, somebody snatches them away, and then all of a sudden, now we've lost them. I thought we were trying to do more, like, in-house stuff and training, like, instead of, I don't know.
Well, I think for in-house training, they do try and do a lot. The CDLs, we used to do in-house, but they, the law's changed on that. And so now we have to use a contractor.
Along those lines, can we require a certain amount of commitment to the city, working for the city, if we put them through that program? Is that legit?
I believe they do.
Okay.
They commit themselves to five years.
But the hard part is trying to collect on it afterwards.
Yeah. Even if the intent is spoken, it might help, but.
Jeff Payne, HR manager. So we do have a written document. It's not just verbal. Requires a 24-month commitment. And if they leave within that 24-month period, then it's prorated, right? So if they stay a year and then leave, they pay 50% back, right? So we've had that in place for a number of years.
Good, that's reasonable. Thank you.
And the impression that folks are leaving after getting trained, you know, Melissa has seen the stats, that's not true so far this year.
Awesome. Thank you.
Our turnover is down 25%, so.
That's awesome. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you. For wastewater collection, the training increases for required safety training. And then we've talked about the electricity. EFL has indicated a 12% increase beginning January 1st, 2026. These are the divisions' capital outlay. It's a little bit different than the capital improvement plan in that it's more regular equipment, such as tractors or pickups, loaders, things like that. So they do have a five-year plan. And you can see how the divisions have it over the five years. They have been targeting $700,000 per year for quite a few years. Obviously, with the cost increases, it's a little harder for them to do that. But we do show that in fiscal year 2030, we do get back to that. But again, that's five years out, they may have other needs back at that time.
Yeah, because some of these, I'm looking, and it, you know, it says known problems, none at this time. And I know some of them may be out in the future. But what would also be nice is, like, oh, the AC is broken, or the bed liner, or the, something's ripped in it. And it's like, well, let's look at the cost, especially since we're saying newer products fail faster and may even cost more to maintain. If we can be cost-effective in saying, what can we make to repair this to make it work, which actually might save us more money over the years, so.
Right.
And I know you guys are trying to do that, and this is just a pro forma of staying it. But I think we really have to be frugal and say, okay. I mean, even our vehicles, you know, we run them into the ground, you know, as much as we can.
I can understand the last part.
We run our vehicles into the ground. We want them to, what they've been trying to do is maintain the vehicles, because new things break down faster, they cost more to maintain. So we're trying to see pushing out as much as possible.
I just didn't understand the last part of what you were saying, because.
I mumbled?
Yes.
Sorry. See, I even admit when I do that.
And the divisions do look at this every year, and sometimes they do push things out. They do try to make things last a little bit longer.
Perfect.
Especially if they just did a larger repair, they'll push something out.
Thank you.
Yep. So again, we just talked about the capital outlay. I did wanna point out just two things. So for the water treatment plant, treatment plant, the asset 5516 was a tractor. It was scheduled for replacement in fiscal year 25. And it was moved to a later year. And if we look at the request from last year, it probably should have been a request for a second tractor, sludge tractor, because they did have in their notes that they were requesting, requesting the new for their replacement in the prior year. So they really need two tractors at this time. So that's why you might see it in last year's budget and then this year's budget. So I wanted to point that out. Then the wastewater collection, asset number 6988, trailer. And again, some of this is in the notes of it, but it's, I wanted to make sure it was clear. The original trailer had televising equipment that had been moved from another vehicle. So when all you see is the cost of the trailer, so when we need the replacement, we actually need the trailer and the televising equipment. And that's why it's such a larger increase than the original cost of the trailer that was shown in the capital outlay form. Okay, going on. Continued use of current revenue and operating reserves to fund the five-year capital improvement plan. We talked about all the estimated debt service. Some of it is SRF financing, and some of it's bank financing. We will continue to look at whether maybe we'll do a bond deal. But in the pro forma, we just try to use our most common forms of financing. Assumes increase required for the SRF loan reserves for the wastewater treatment plant. We will need to also add additional funds for the RO and filtration as we get closer to that one. We're currently maintaining a minimum reserves of 3.1 million for operating. That kinda might need to be increased a little bit if we're trying to stay at our 16.7%. The rate study does include the new significant projects that were added, and we're maintaining the 1.5 million RNR capital reserve. So that was previously established for bonded debt covenant, and that might come in handy if we do go back out for a bond debt that we have that, those funds set aside. Considerations that we're always concerned about in the utility fund is the volatility of water and wastewater revenues, whether it's rainfall, drought conditions, watering restrictions, economic conditions, et cetera. We do have the uncertainty of economic forecasts and continued increases in some commodities, especially chemicals. The consultant is to explore alternative financing for all projected finance projects, whether it's the SRF bonds or bank financing. Legislative changes regarding surcharge for unincorporated county customers to be addressed by legal and consultant. Some good news there, it was turned down, so we're happy about that. Continue to pursue grant opportunities. And as we just talked about, we are actively filing for grants. The next one, you have your change to the AMI system. It's still up in the air and what those costs will be. Our subject to sewer, we talked about our assumptions there. We had a 25% estimate for grants. So obviously, if we don't get those grants, can we move forward with that project or not? You know, costs have increased since this last study was done on that. Continue to pursue opportunities with Charlotte County to add these areas to their master plan for possible road and drainage funding to be contributed to the project. Timing of subject to sewer projects and cost estimate increases, again, haven't been updated. So for personnel requests, the interim city manager had included in the five-year pro forma water distribution, a quantity of two maintenance workers. Again, it'd be more proactive maintenance and reduce overtime for repairs. The annual cost is $73,415 for each employee, with one-time costs of $3,000 for phone and equipment. The administration has requested an engineering technician, so that's $84,350. Again, to provide critical technical support, alleviate workload pressure of current engineering and operations staff, improve operational efficiency and service delivery. This position would need a vehicle in fiscal year 27 for $33,000. And then you have other annual costs of $81,350. Also in the administration, there's a project manager in fiscal year 26. $146,810 overall. That includes one-time costs of $51,000 for the vehicle, computer, and desk. Again, there's a significant increase in number and complexity of capital and operational projects. It would support planning, execution, and coordination of projects, and the growing risk of delays, cost overruns, and missed opportunities. They also requested a grants coordinator, $90,620, to have dedicated support for finding and responding to grant opportunities, manage grant, and maintain compliance through completion of project. So, and that position would not have required a vehicle.
So with asking for a grants coordinator for utilities fund is, so what about Richard? I know he was general.
He was general, and he was helping out. And you'll see the recommendations on the next page from the Utility Advisory Board. That is the one position that they're maybe recommending to put off, to continue to either use Richard or consultants as needed, leveraging our consultants that we currently have.
Okay.
Okay. So we have our Utility Advisory Board's recommendations. They recommend adding the requested positions except for pushing out the grants coordinator and leveraging the consultants. They recommended the proposed budgets as requested. They did recommend providing customer communication through insert and trim notices, if allowed, and/or customer bills regarding city utilities needs, just to express why the increase is gonna be needed. One of the board members did provide an article, and we added it to the agenda packet regarding the true value of city-provided water services, just to help understand some of those items. So with those recommendations, this would be the pro forma, adding those staff, except for the grant person, how the pro forma would look. Any questions?
Well, to me, if we have additional grant writers, it helps us find money, and they basically pay for themselves. You know, that's the one I would think is one of them that we'd really want to have. Am I, Tom, you're gonna come up and talk?
Sure.
After having a conversation with Melissa and Kristin, as well as with Richard, we've come to the conclusion that realistically, most of the grants that we're applying for, we can either handle internally or with the assistance of a consultant. For example, the wastewater treatment plant, the grant for that was actually secured in part by CDM Smith. And oftentimes, their technical expertise and size of their team allows for quicker handling and applications for those grants. So sometimes it might cost us a little bit of money to apply for those, using those types of services. But in the end, the outcomes are often better. But I agree with the recommendations here.
Just another point on that. When we get the technical assistance from an outside firm, we then use that in other grant applications. So then when Richard takes a look at another potential grant, he has the data that he can put directly into that grant application. So at this point, we don't feel that we are understaffed in the area of grants and grant acquisition, at least.
And these positions that we're asking for, not only will help us, you know, maintaining our city, hopefully reducing us to have to contract out, like, for AMI readings, but also maybe to help get our projects moving a lot faster?
Correct. The engineering technician will help with the review of engineering projects. Currently, we only have one engineer in the utilities department. This would add the engineering tech, which will, like I said, allow him to assist with reviews, assist with CAD and some of the GIS-related functions in the engineering department. Outside of that, the project manager obviously will help us with the volume of projects that we're undertaking. Often, these are very complicated projects, and having one project manager, or right now, we have two technically, and they're spread very thin with the large projects that we're undertaking. So this will definitely assist with that and help ensure that we're not missing anything.
Yeah, because the delay in time just increases the cost, so. And I love, I think I read in here, and I was gonna highlight, and I forgot, that you're actually putting money away for projects so that we can finally get on a maintenance schedule instead of always having something break down and cost us more money. So I appreciate that you're doing that.
So if you have no changes to the budget as it stands, obviously, when you see the final presentation of the total budgets, this will pretty much be what you'll see. The one thing that we did talk about previously that will be updated is the health insurance, because we did get our numbers on that. And so that'll be a little bit of a savings there.
Any questions?
No questions.
You gonna approve this?
Move to approve 6A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Okay, 6B.
If we could change the PowerPoint. Thank you. Okay, so these are the last few funds that we needed to review, was the special use fund, leased property fund, and marina funds. We'll start with the special use fund. So for fiscal year '25, the revenues are from insurance recoveries and FEMA reimbursements. And some of them are estimated based on pending obligations. Others will be added as they are obligated if we're not sure if they're going to obligate those projects. Reappropriations and appropriations will be brought to council in August. So we hadn't quite finalized our reappropriations from the prior year. We'll get that done, move that forward. And then for new revenue that's been coming in, we'll appropriate those funds. Transfers as approved in prior years will be brought forward in the reappropriations. And the change to the transfer for historic sea hall is moved to historic downtown flooding as approved by council at a previous meeting. Additional appropriations will be made as FEMA obligates more projects in fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 for hurricane projects. And so then let's show you the pro forma. So again, you see in the future years, we don't have a lot, because again, this is predicated on if we're having a storm or not. So we don't... We hope that we do not have any more. Any questions on the special use fund? Then we're going to the city leased property fund. And again, these are transferred from our previous CRA fund, our community redevelopment agency. Now that it's sunset, we're moving everything into the city leased property fund. So this is brand new. The first section is the Harold Court Center Operations and Maintenance. So again, it's for the parking structure specifically, maintenance of the public facilities and tenant common areas. And the revenue sources that we currently receive in for this is leases and common area maintenance fees. The revenues for fiscal year 2025 are reduced for the tenants due to hurricanes and Ponte Gorda's bowl's lease release. Other revenues assume the city use of the FGC units in fiscal year '25 and '26 and one unit vacancy through fiscal year '27 through 2030. And again, that's just to be conservative. If we're fully leased out, it's all good news for us. So the transfer fund balance from closing the CRA from fiscal year '25 for this particular area is $419,181. But we do also have to transfer a project that had not been completed, which was the ceiling of the parking garage. Operating expenditures are per request in fiscal year '26. And we did leave some expenditures flat, and some had the 3 percent estimated increase in operating expenditures for the future years with a general liability insurance of 5 percent. And again, we accumulate funds for larger capital projects for common areas and allocated portion of the parking garage. And so this is the pro forma. And you see the transfer of the balance in fiscal year '25, and then where we're at going forward. Any questions on that part?
This is something we really seriously have to take a look at, because we are not bringing in enough money to maintain this area. And I know it's kind of... I think it's in a lot of places that the elevator has, like, gone down a lot. And I think that's the reason why a lot of people don't want to use Harold Court garages, because the elevators aren't working. But we really... Mr. Laskovich, I'm going to ask you to try to see what you can do to help us out. But we really need to take a look at our leases. We need to look at our expenses to try to balance this much better instead of us, you know, always having a deficit, how this looks.
Then we have a non-departmental section of our leased property fund. Again, a lot of these are for leases, but they're various leases. So we can use those funds for maintenance of improvements or anything as needed. Use of the remaining fund balance and lease revenues towards projects previously funded by CRA could be smaller, larger maintenance projects. The revenue sources are land leases and interest income. So for fiscal year '25, that transfer of the fund balance from closing the CRA is But again, the project for sealing the garage is also out of this portion of funds, because we can't do the whole thing out of the lease, because part of the garage is for all public, not just for the tenants of the garage. The land lease revenue is the marina ground lease, the windset lease, and Sonovus ground lease. Funds are accumulated and can be used towards marina repairs, Harold Court Center repairs, or other property previously funded by CRA. So a proposal could be to use of those funds for maintaining the marina and fulfilling our submerged land lease requirements while the marina is out of service for hurricane repairs. And so you'll see that when we talk about the marina and why that might be a good use of funds. And then this is the pro forma for that particular section of those funds. And you can see that the operating reserves are growing until we identify a particular project to spend those funds on. Any questions there? Okay. We'll keep moving. We're going with marina fund operations. So the projected slip revenues for fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 are minimal. Currently, just the commercial slips and two or three residential slips that are being used. Fiscal year '26 projects at the mooring field may be usable for the second half of the year. Again, if we could somehow get that up and running, we might be able to get that up and running quicker than the docks. Fiscal year '27 through '28 projects mooring field usage for a full year. No slip revenue, again, due to the estimated length of possibly permitting those new slips in construction. In fiscal year '29, and I'm sorry, it should have been fiscal year '2030, projects the slips back in use. It does include estimated grants for the operations of the pump-out boat. We do get a MAT grant as well as a Florida Wildlife grant for that purpose. Fiscal year '26 through fiscal year '30, we do have our ship store rental revenue, and we would assume that the community room would become available for use again, and we would have rentals from there. We are awaiting FEMA obligation for Hurricane Ian and Hurricane Milton projects. Some good news, we did have our site inspection yesterday, so I was out there with Teresa as well, and our engineering department, Brian Clements, working with them to go over all the damages at the marina as well as at the park so far. We would have to adjust rental rates as needed for the mooring field and slips when they're back in service. We would review the area rates for comparison so that we're competitive. Possible boat parking and/or boat ramp fees, as was brought up previously. Typically used for upkeep of the boat ramp, repairs of the docks associated with the use of the ramp, parking at the ramp, or restroom facilities of the ramp. So again, fiscal year '25 through '28, we have a reduced budget to minimal service. We will continue to review the service level reductions that we can maybe make while maintaining requirements of the submerged land lease. Fiscal year '29 through '2030, we would start adding back in, we normally would have $20,000 per year that we start accumulating for dredging, and $40,000 per year for repair and maintenance of the docks and mooring field, to again, start building those reserves again for the infrastructure needs. We would consider use of the city leased property reserve to supplement until the slips are in use again. The bid is out for the marina management of the facilities. So we'll see where that takes us, as well as the pro forma. And you can see that we're negative, and so we would have to do something. We were able to balance barely fiscal year '26.
So I did like Janine's proposal, when she was saying about we need to start charging fees. And I know, living down in Naples, the residents actually got a sticker that we put in their cars, they didn't have to pay. But anybody else outside of the city who are using our stuff, I'd like to see somehow, again, like Janine was saying, start charging these people, because this is us still trying to maintain it for them having something free of charge, and they don't even live in the city. So I am in full support if we can try to figure out how to start charging. Are we also working with a gentleman with a business to try to help him get a boat slip, so that he can dock there as well? I don't know the status of that.
We have to look at all of it in totality, so there was a waiting list at the marina. This will be a part of the discussion that we have in August. It'll also be a part of the, as we get together, the new management contract. We can look at those types of things. It isn't as easy as just saying one year old the door and popping somebody back in there. And we do have, that is income that we have that's coming in, and it's guaranteed that's never been late. So that's a huge benefit to that as well. But it is something we're cognizant of, and we are working, we are hopeful to find a solution for that gentleman and others that would like to use space at that marina. But right now, we're extremely handicapped with the amount of slips that we have available due to hurricane damage.
So Kristen, you're asking if it's okay if we start using some of our other funds to help get this marina up and running? Is that correct?
Correct. Again, we might not need it for fiscal year '26, but looking ahead, we probably will need some of those funds for '27 and '28. Or if, like, the city portion that might be needed for the FEMA projects might be able to come from there as well.
Do you have any sense of how likely we are to get money from FEMA to help recuperate our marina?
I think we'll be likely to get approved and obligated for the project. The... They will not probably fund 100 percent of it, because they, again, they're only going to look at what was damaged. So if there's other docks that we still have to replace, because we need to replace the whole system, they might not cover those portions of the docks. So those would 100 percent be on the city. But we are trying to stress that it is a full system, and we will work with FEMA closely to try and make our case that, you know, as much can be covered because of the whole destruction.
Kind of like a roof replacement, you know? You can't just replace certain tiles. It's...
Yep.
One more question. The marina management contract that's up for bid, I imagine it's a very much reduced scope of what the manager would be doing, since there's not a lot of slips or...
Well, what's hard is there still are a lot of functions that they're doing, because they are helping customers, they have to manage the pump-out boat, they do the maintenance of the landscaping, the boat ramp. So unfortunately, you still have to have people there throughout the day. I mean, they have cut back on staff as much as possible. Anything else? I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If you're amenable, again, this will be what will be brought forward in the full final budget.
Move to approve 6B. That's the appropriate thing to do? Yeah?
Do you have a second?
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next is 6C. Proposed millage rate.
Did you want me to read the title?
Stevie, on read or do you want?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, adopting a proposed millage rate for the fiscal year 2025, 2026, setting a date, time, and place of public hearing to consider the adoption of tentative millage rate and proposed budget and providing an effective date.
So the proposed millage rate is 3.8686 mils, and the calculated rollback rate is 3.8686 mils, making the proposed millage rate the same as the rollback rate. This resolution sets the tentative millage rate in the budget public hearing for Wednesday, September 10th, 2025, at 5:01 PM at the Lashley Community Room, 120 Lashley Court, Unit 111, Ponte Gorda, Florida. The taxable value for homestead properties will increase no more than 2.9 percent for tax year 2025, 2026, in accordance with state statute.
Any questions?
No questions.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve 6C.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carries. 6D, annual evaluation of the interim city manager.
Good morning again. Still morning. Jeff Payne, HR manager. So coming to you this morning to talk about Melissa Reichert's annual evaluation, right? We sent out the forms, and we got all those returned. Each council member goes through and rates the city manager in a number of areas. Her review was due April the 8th. So what I'm going to be asking you to do is recommend an increase or no increase, right? All the employees were approved up to 4 percent for their increases. So we can approve her up to 4 percent and roll it back or make it retro back to April the 8th. So she'll get a nice lump sum on the next check. And if you want to go through the evaluation, I wasn't going to read all the different comments and ratings, but if you guys want to go through that, that's certainly up to you.
I read them, I'm fine.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Do you have any discussion on this? So I do want to make sure that we point out, and I think Kathleen said it, she's not only doing her full-time job as the assistant city manager, she has taken on the full-time job of the interim city manager. That's two full-time jobs that she's been doing. And I think we can all agree, especially listening to all the residents, that she's been doing an above and beyond outstanding job. I don't know how... I mean, we think we have it tough just trying to do what we're doing right here, you know, with this, but she's taking on... And I have not heard one staff member come up and say that Missy's doing a bad job. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'm thankful that you've somehow handled... And you stay calm and collected through the whole time. I've never seen you angry or get mad at anybody, so... And I think that we also have to know that a lot of times, it's the people underneath them that do such a great job. So when you look at how the reviews were last year for the city manager, most of it was because of this lady right here doing a lot of the work for it. And it is well seen. So I think we need to make a motion on what we're going to do.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and give Melissa Reichert the 4 percent raise, plus make it retroactive to... What was the date?
April the 8th.
April 8th.
My second.
We have two seconds.
Wow, we have two seconds. I'm going to say, what do you think about... All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Missy, thank you first. Okay, 6E, Fishville Acquisition.
Attorney Laskovich, do you want to start this one?
I think he's finding it.
Okay.
Fishville Acquisition Agreement Discussion to confirm on the record that the additional phased improvement specified in the Fishville Acquisition Agreement has not been completed, and the City Council has not granted any extension of the deadline. Upon such confirmation, the City Council shall decide whether or not the deed to the reverter parcel should be recorded with the clerk of the circuit court reconvening said reverter parcels to the city.
I don't think there's any question.
Well, I think we... It wasn't in the... Well, I think we, it wasn't in the agenda packet, but are we allowed to discuss what we got as far as the appraisal on it? Is that open to, is that open to everybody? Are you all okay with me saying, okay, so the appraisal came back and the reverter parcels were worth 3.6 million? So that kind of puts it into perspective as far as, you know, the value of that property.
Good to know.
Yep.
We had a conversation, Attorney Luskovich and I did, with the attorney that was representing the lender yesterday. And as of 8:51 this morning, we received an email from them requesting a 30-day extension of the July 16th deadline that Pontegorroda has given for recording of the quick claim deed. They see the following as possible passed towards settlement that they could explore during a 30-day period that they're asking for. Construction of our infrastructure in exchange for termination of the reverter. They go on to say, I understand that representatives of the lender and the receiver had previously been engaged in discussions with representatives of the City of Pontegorroda, constructing certain infrastructure and other items for the public benefit at the cost of the lender or its successors on behalf of the City of Pontegorroda. After our call, I spoke with the sale brokers for the property and they told me there might have been discussions regarding a moring field and use of other facilities. Regardless, we are open to a dialogue with the city on providing public improvements in exchange for termination of the reverter clause if that is still in the interest of the city. Number two, redevelopment of Fishville. If the City of Pontegorroda is more focused on redevelopment, given the extent of the hurricane damage and the pending sale, we would ask to work with the City of Pontegorroda on coming up with a new deadline for redevelopment of parameters that we can present to our buyer. Number three, a ground lease. We ask for confirmation of the ground lease document. While we are under the discussion during the 30-day period, so if we are not able to come to a settlement under one or two above the new owners of Fishville would have a clear understanding of the terms of the ground lease.
Well, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm interested in a ground lease and getting that money every year to put towards. I mean, you saw what it's going to cost us for the boat ramps, the parks. It's a lot of upkeep and I think that we would be foolish to sign it over. That's just my thought.
I agree. And what Don Harson was saying, this is a brand new. I don't think that we have to commit to 99 years and even the amount because that is outdated, especially when you look at how valuable that land is right now. So I agree with Janine.
So I'm speaking up because I was part of this Zoom meeting we had yesterday and I think it was a very successful conversation. There was myself, Dr. Reichert, and then the attorney and another individual from the lender. I need you guys to be aware, we had, they had sent us, CFART is the, who are the receivers, sent us a letter in mid-June. And Missy and I had collaborated on sending them back a letter that it was our intent, honor about July 16th, to begin the process of filing a quick claim deed from the reverter clause. That's when we are eligible to begin the process of filing it. So even though that may be a potential date, we could initiate the process. I need you guys to be aware, that doesn't mean it's a date we can just walk into the clerk's office or to the recording office and say, here's our quick claim deed. We still have to get permission from the Circuit Court Judge Gentili in order to do that because of the way the Fishville lawsuit is still pending. But we can begin the process if we wanted to. So when they had asked us yesterday to, you know, give a roughly a 30-day extension, you know, I can tell you guys, we can't even get into court within 30 days to even get permission from the judge to do it anyways. We had expressed to them yesterday that the city is open-minded to hearing what the buyer has in mind of what they want to do. And Dr. Reichert, if I'm not mistaken, I think they said around mid-August potentially a closing date?
That's correct.
All right. That we had indicated, you know, that the city wants to work with the new buyer, but we wanted to hear from them on what they may be thinking, what their plans are. And they were at the position, well, they don't represent the buyer, but they're trying to do the in-between because they're the bank. They know we have this quick claim deed sitting out there and kind of have a strong arm leverage on this. So we have scheduled another meeting with them, I believe this Friday at 10:00 AM. You know, they want to, they wanted to hear potentially from council what we may be thinking. When I say we, I mean you guys. So I didn't mean to say we as including me, but, you know, to what you guys are thinking. But Dr. Reichert and I had stressed the, look, we're looking to file this. You know, I was actually, I had to laugh afterwards when I spoke with Dr. Reichert and the other attorney called me combative. And I said, my role is to defend the city. My goal, you know, my goal and my role is to protect the city. But he said it kind of in a comical way of, you know, we don't want to deal with combative councils. And, you know, because we were stressing, you know, we have this quick claim deed and we can file it and you guys may get nothing from us. So they made it, you know, very, very obvious to us that the buyers want to work with the city, whether it's we keep the ground lease and lease back to them and give them new timelines. But, you know, I, it's my encouragement to you guys that we keep the dialogue going with them. We thought it was very productive and we hear from the buyers what they're thinking. But at the same time, we can begin the process of getting the quick claim deed moving, in essence, to, because if they're potentially going to be closing mid-August and we begin the process, it's, you know, it's putting their feet to the fire is what it's doing. And we just don't want this sitting out there.
I'm all for the quick claim deed, going ahead and filing it.
I am too.
You all want to discuss it?
You don't want to discuss it?
Do you all want to discuss it still?
Yeah, we want to discuss it, but I think we need to file for a quick. We've just been burned so many times and we've made, you know, mistakes and this is something that we can't make a mistake on. And I think that we need to just go ahead, like Janine said, go ahead and file it. We want to be open to discussions, but we still need to move forward.
Okay, so from what I'm hearing then, because, you know, I have to file appropriate paperwork with the clerk of circuit courts, is to begin that process and at the same time, keep communications going with them. And what I'm hearing from at least two of you so far is, is look, potentially a ground lease and see where we can go from there. They were open-minded to that as well on how they do that. But I can certainly begin the process of initiating the quick claim deed as well.
I'm on board.
I'm in agreement. And as an expression of good faith, you're saying 30 days isn't going to affect us. So can we go ahead and log out then? Is it?
Now, what, what they're indicating is, is that we at least don't get a court hearing prior to 30 days. I can tell you, court systems are pretty backed up right now. Even if I filed a motion today and by the time we coordinated court hearing with the receivers, the bank, the buyers, everybody else involved, I mean, we're talking at a minimum 60 to 90 days out.
So I think we all agree that we would love to see this proceed and, but we also need to protect our assets.
Okay.
So yes, I think Greg and Janie are saying yes.
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 Do you want us to, when we speak with them on Friday, to stress to them that we are inclined of doing a ground lease with you guys? You know, we can work out the details, but, you know, it's our intent to keep the property in possession of the city or in the ownership of the city, working out a new ground lease with them, effective a certain date. Okay, perfect.
Negotiate that, yes. Awesome.
All right, wonderful.
And is there any timeframe as to the closing of that? Do you, did they tell you or just they're still doing the due diligence?
No, I, if I'm not mistaken, they said mid-August, but I can try to, or when we speak with them on Friday, try to narrow it down to a more specific date, but they have said right around mid-August.
I'm very excited, to be honest. I'm very excited about.
Well, and it sounds like that-
It's going to be great.
We love Fishville.
It sounds like the buyers, and we had expressed to them, we had spoken to, and of course, when I say we, I mean, you know, you guys. You know, they had, the buyers had a family member who was an attorney and they were, you know, bringing up, apparently she's out of the picture. The buyers are very motivated to work with the city, hear what the city is looking for in terms of potential development there or, you know, what your ideas are with that particular, with those parcels, on what you guys are thinking. And that's where we can go back and forth with them as well.
I think barking is the toughest issue.
The what is?
Barking.
Yep.
Okay. So, motion?
What is the motion?
Is for us to move forward with a quick claim deed with Mr. Luskovich?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we go ahead and move forward with reporting a, or recording, excuse me, a quick claim deed for the property. Should I be specific, the reverter parcels?
Is that adequate?
That's adequate, yeah.
I second that.
Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, 6F, SCADA.
Good afternoon, Ann Heinen, Procurement, from the record. Staff is requesting approval to purchase equipment to upgrade the wastewater collections division SCADA telemetry system. The city has had a blanket notice of intended decision to sole source with data flow systems. They've been the provider of those systems since 1997 and the sole source has been in place since 2012. And this is embedded technology till the city abandons the system. The estimated expenditure at that time was about a little less than $30,000 a year and that was within the city manager's approval authority. The city has been awarded a grant to upgrade the equipment at the lift stations, including the SCADA and other appurtenances. There are 60 pump controllers that are at the end of their life and the cost to exchange that system per unit is $4,843 for a total of $290,580. The server also needs to be upgraded. That's a cost of $1688 for a total of $292,268. The granting agency has approved the sole source purchase of these items and staff is recommending approval.
Any questions? Do you have a motion?
I move to approve 6F.
I'll second, Janine.
Can we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. If we can keep going this fast, that'd be great. 6G, Tiger Dam.
And the next item is the approval to purchase Tiger Dam flood control barrier systems. During research of these systems, it was noted that this is a proprietary system, which is patented to U.S. Flood Control Corporation. Procurement released a blanket notice of intended decision to sole source the purchase of training, maintenance, and repairs of the Tiger Dam flood control barrier system for parts and accessories. Notices were sent out to 576 vendors, six boots, the sole source online, and two vendors submitted a response, which we call a protest, to consider their products and that it wasn't through their determination, it wasn't a true sole source. We went back to the department and we did obtain documentation from U.S. Flood Corporations that it is a proprietary patented product solely through their distribution. We also confirmed that they did recently allow a company to sell some of the residential property, residential Tiger Dams on Amazon, but they have limited their ability to sell the product for government agencies that is strictly through Tiger Dams. So during our research, we did confirm that information and we provided that, the information to the companies that we were proceeding with the purchase of the Tiger Dams and we received, we did not receive any other additional information from them. The reason why, the reasoning for the Tiger Dam system is because it is a patented, inflatable, seamlessly interlocking, stackable system that is rapidly deployed. That is one of the main concerns with the department, that they can rapidly deploy the system. And it is also customizable for the floodwater ranging from 18 to 32 inches in height. So the initial purchase will be for 135 Tiger Dams and they will cover and protect City Hall, City Hall Annex, Herald Court, the public safety, and the fire station number three buildings from flooding. So staff is recommending the purchase, which is currently $408,936.
Any questions? I know I had a resident ask, you know, we did the protection at Herald Court, you know, so we have something there. Is this like a double protection? Is it necessary to still put a Tiger Dam around Herald Court as well? It was just a question that was brought up, so I think that they just wanted to.
Whenever it's Public Works, it's going to be a fail-safe method. We have, we believe that the panels are going to work as they intended in the past, but there's also other areas of water entry that could potentially happen besides just at the door openings and window openings. The Tiger Dam will protect the building in its entirety and prevent that from happening.
Thank you. Good.
I move to approve 4G unless there's others.
6.
6G. 6G.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
May I make a comment?
Let me finish. Oppose? Motion carries. Jen, do you want to make a comment?
It's interesting to hear that there are residential Tiger Dams and I think it would be wise for us to put that all over our city website as an alternative. I mean, because people just don't know these things and they're all very concerned about flooding and I don't know if we're allowed to do that, but.
It would be kind of a slippery slope because there are vendors that provide, other vendors that provide that service. If I can find a kind of a clearinghouse type website that I could direct people to, I could include a link on that. I'll make a note to try and look for that.
Resources that are available or something, yeah.
Certainly.
Awesome. Okay, so. 6G, 6H, Agreement Award Kimler Horn and Associates Master Agreement for Engineering Downtown Stormwater.
Yes, this project is twofold. It encompasses 6H and then 6I. 6H is a master agreement for engineering services. The engineering services are for the downtown stormwater management system. Procurement issued a request for qualifications, which is based on the Consultant Competitive Negotiation Act from the state statutes. It's based on qualifications and a committee is formed to review the responses received and qualify those responses and rank those responses. Solicitation notices were sent to 622 vendors and the city received two responses. The evaluation committee was put together and selected Kimley Horn and ranked the firms as the top-ranked firm and proceeded into negotiations for the master agreement. The city engineer for Public Works was assigned to negotiate with Procurement for the master agreement. The master agreement will contain hourly rates for negotiating future authorizations. Just as a note, the negotiations did provide lower rates for an overall 10% reduction in hourly rates. So in order to approve the next, the master agreement would have to be approved. Or if you'd like me to go over I and then you can discuss the whole project, I'd be happy to do so.
Does anybody have any discussion on this? Does anybody have any discussion on this? Okay, I do. Sorry. Back at the old council, we approved a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do a study, and now it's come to this point. I understand, everything's slow, government works slow. But I'm sorry, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to do a study that includes a survey, and I don't think we need a survey right now. We've got a lot of history here with stuff that has been happening, with flooding, with Gilchrist Park. I just, I personally think that this is an outrageous price. I don't think we should be approving it. We could use this money to help, not my idea, but I think that this, i- it could be used to help our residents, um, maybe even considering, um, getting property. I, I just think, what are we doing? Is this gonna be the Taj Mahal of, of flooding? You know, all of a sudden we're doing the Cadillac of, we have all these things, now we have to do this, and all of a sudden down the road, we've spent how many millions of dollars to find out we can't even do the solution that they're giving us? So with something this large an amount, I, I personally think we need to go out and rebid it.
I invite the Public Works Director and the city engineer to, to come up and address those, those issues. The scope of work is, um, developed by the department, um, so I will defer to them.
I, I think we need a simple scope right now to see what's going on.
Ron Everest Public Works Director, um, the, is there, the scope of work, um, let's talk about the survey, take care of that part. So the scope of work doesn't even get into the survey portion of it until task three. Whenever you're designing an engineering project, you have to base your design, your models, everything has to be based on accurate data. So the first, uh, couple of tasks are taking every piece of existing elevation data and design information that they have, they can get their hands on, identifying a drainage basin area which fully defines where the project happens, and then they're gonna utilize that information to identify gaps in the information. And so the gaps are what is actually going to be the survey work that takes place, and so there is going to be all of the existing information utilized in those first stages of the, um, project. If you're talking about a reduced scope, I would be interested in hearing what, uh, you're suggesting.
Well, I think it needs to be rebid, and like you said, the, the survey is in the third step. Well, let's figure out how much it is in the first two steps then, because when do we stop and say, no, we're looking at this, this is already too much? You know, when we get into design and engineering, it's gonna be a lot more expensive, and are it, are we as a city gonna be able to handle these costs? So we have a lot of history of our flooding downtown, we all know it floods downtown, and I think all of us kinda get tired of hearing, we have to do another study, we have to do another study. Granted, they're necessary, but seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, when we allocated last year a hundred and twenty-five for it, I just think there's gotta be a better price. I'm not the expert in it, but to me, I think, since we only had two bids and we're, we're just showing us one, I think we need to go out there and, and try a bid again, and maybe change something, like we don't wanna survey at this point, we want to get the general idea of what's going on with our flooding.
I think we're gonna need a little more direction than that.
All right, now it's just a...
In terms of, yeah, what, what you actually do wanna see in a scope and what you want a downtown flood study to consist of.
Has there ever been a scope done before? Has there ever been a, a downtown, I mean, I just find it hard to believe, I've lived here all my life, and it's basically flooded during a high tide, the, the area that I live in now, in a few inches of rain, so has there ever been a study? I mean, it seems like there was a study not too long ago.
Brian, can you speak to that at all?
I mean, there were, there were two studies done in the past. One, one was in nineteen ninety-two, and that was included, uh, that information was included in the bid, and one was done in two thousand and eight. And that's, that's when you're, so the ninety-two project, I haven't dove a lot into that, but it, um, it was never moved forward due to the cost.
Right.
As, as the gist of it. The two thousand eight, that's where the tide flexes came into...
Okay.
Being installed, and that was done in a two-phase. Um, part of them done in the two thousand eight, and then two thousand twelve was, uh, the, the other portion of the, um, it's kinda broken, broken out and to two different...
So those can't be utilized, is what I'm asking?
So we, they would utilize all that, they're gonna look at all those basins that were created...
Okay.
And, and that kinda data to start, um, that's what, that's what Ron was alluding to, um, as far as them building their initial data for the, for the project, and then the, the surveying, which I do wanna point out, that's a not-to-exceed number, so we ju, we just had to assign some kind of estimated number of things they may have to survey to, to get a number for that. But then that's to, to fill in the, the void. I, I do agree, I would need a little more guidance. I don't know, it, it's a very complex system, it's a large area to, to look into, and very tough to shoot for the, shoot from the hip and come up with solutions without having some real, real data to back it up, um, to, to understand what's going on with the storm system, what parts may be undersized, where you may need a pump, where you may need more tide flex valves, or some other alternative.
And then basically speaking, the, the other alternative is to raise the houses in the neighborhood, or to, as houses, or, or acquire the property that then the city would own, and then not, um, not allow development on that property once it becomes city-owned, and raise the streets.
Yeah, what, if, if structures were raised, that does allow us more room to, to increase the, raise the streets.
Elevation is the key.
Well, and also, didn't, weren't there studies and everything done when you revamped Gilchrist Park, because it seems like that has caused some issues as, as well, you know?
So those are very specific to the improvements in the park. They're designing a, a stormwater management system to provide water quality treatment for the additional impervious area. They're not looking at it from a flood study perspective. Yes, they're running, they're, I guess they're, they're, they're running a certain rainfall event, but those, those, those systems are only designed to provide water quality, not attenuation, because it's a tidal discharge.
Uh, can we get somebody to look at the last two studies? You know, 'cause how much really of the downtown has really changed over that time? You know, in, in structures and things like that? I don't think that there's been a huge growth, so can we have somebody just evaluate those and kinda give us an idea of where we might be going without doing like...
So there was some initial discussion about having that, an approach like that, our concern is you're asking another engineering firm to kinda take on someone else's design and, um, their, their, um, alternatives, and...
But they're gonna use that into the factor anyhow, because they're gathering that data, so...
But they're gonna be running their own models to, to verify and that they've dated that they're in agreement with it.
So, okay, I understand that. So we have somebody else that we hired back in two thousand eight to do it, that were no longer in existence, or we're not using them, we're just taking a whole new person. I guess I'm, it seems like, instead of just taking something that's been existing, taking a look at it, let's see, let's kinda get an idea of what might be happening, what were their ideas? What did they suggest that was too costly back then, that might actually work, instead of going, let's have somebody just throw everything out, let's start again, let's have us give ideas. I, you know, it's, I'd like to see what the old ideas were, are they acceptable? Can they work? You know, do we need new, you know, uh, brand-new ideas? And if that's the case, that we need something new, yeah, then let's consider, you know, looking at a, a full, you know, study. But I, I think that we're not looking... You'd have to come forward so we could hear you. I, I just think that we need, my personal opinion is, this is a huge amount of money. Um, we've had a couple of studies, I'd like to see, and I'm not the expert in this, so I can't look at it, and that's why we need somebody, you know, a professional to look at it. Can we write a scope to have somebody take a look, or, or, or maybe even hire, if the other person's still available, how much would it cost them to take a look at this, to kinda give us where we're at, what it's gonna cost us in the future? Because I think, bottom line, we have to know how much this is gonna cost. And if this is, you know, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand for a study, what do we think that outcome is gonna be for how much it's gonna cost us to actually fix what's going on? And is there, like you say, do we elevate the houses? Do we buy the property? What do we, what do we do?
Well, Janice Stinton, no amount of study or solution will stop the tide...
Right.
...the surge. So really, all we're doing, dealing with is trying to solve more runoff issues, quicker drainage, that type of thing, correct?
My, my point is, we spent a million dollars, okay, on the Taj Mahal for a plan that we're never gonna use.
Right.
Okay? We're delaying development until we get this fixed. So I don't know what the other bid was, but you gotta bid, they're a respectable company. I think at some point we have to move forward. Maybe you'd feel more comfortable if they came and made a presentation to you, and tried to give you an idea of what, what they were considering.
We need to, sorry.
Yeah.
Procedurally wise, we have to open up for public discussion.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry. Are we discussing here? Do you wanna go ahead? Mike, do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah. I just, I think, you know, we're, you know, we're in hurricane season in, in a matter of days.
Right.
And I think we can't keep kicking the can. Okay, they, they put it out, they got, two people responded, uh...
Can we know what the other bid was?
Okay, so I'd like to, to, to kinda clarify. Engineers and architects, they are bid out according to the Competitive Negotiations Act Florida statutes, and our ordinance says that we have to follow that procedure, state statute. So this is a different vehicle than just bidding out for a dollar amount. This is the first stage where we engage, we send out a bid document saying, this is what the city would like to accomplish, here is the background information. They provide a response, and a project approach, and their team, and the city goes, the city puts together an evaluation committee. They review the responses, we, we propose and, and put into the solicitation the criteria of what the ranking is going to be for the ESE members, which is the evaluation committee. It's going to be evaluation of the team qualifications, it's gonna be evaluation of the existing firm, it's going to be evaluation of the references, it's gonna be an evaluation of the existing projects that they've done, like the one that we would like to engage them in. So all that information is compiled, um, it's reviewed to make sure that they, um, Procurement does a, an initial evaluation, to make sure that they, um, meet all of the minimum qualifications, and they've provided all of the information that we've asked for. It's submitted to committee, they review it, they rank the firms, we get together, we have a public meeting, the public meeting, we discuss the proposals, and we rank the firms. Then we proceed into, um, the committee, um, assign someone to, to go into negotiations, or, I'm sorry, there's another, a stage with this. They also say if they want the, the firms, the top-ranked firms, to either interview, because you have to have discussions per CCNA guidelines with either the, the top-ranked firms or all of the firms. So then we, we decide at that meeting, the top-ranked firms are gonna go into, to either an interview or a presentation, and here are the subjects that we want them to, to let us know. In this case, it was an interview, so it was a more informal, uh, process. We gave them topics that committee wanted to hear about, then we go into the interviews. They assign values for those interviews, and then the evaluation committee gets the final ranking. So it's a bit of a process for these types of, of procurements, so that's why they take a little bit longer than just your, your, your bid, saying, we want you to build this, here are the plans, give us a number. So it's, it's much different than that process. So, um, after the end of that second ESE meeting, they gave us the top-ranked firm, which is Kim Lee Horn, based on their presentation and their original proposal. Then, uh, committee assigned someone to go into negotiations with that top-ranked firm, and the city engineer was designated by the committee to do so. So it, we did, um, cover, they gave us their proposed approach, and then we did go into negotiations for the project approach, which is basically the city engineer goes over that with them to, to get the desired outcome.
So you pick a firm without knowing how much they're gonna charge because of all their criteria?
That's Florida statutes.
So we can't, you said the top two, so why couldn't we interview the top two, saying you're both good?
We did.
And, and, but we wanna hear both proposals of how much it costs. Why, why is that not acceptable? That, to me, seems kinda crazy.
It's Florida statutes.
So the Florida statute says that we can't listen to two different proposals, because we do want these other things to show us the, how much it costs.
What Florida statute says, then, if you're not able to negotiate an acceptable contract with the first, the, the first-ranked firm, then we would go to the second-ranked firm.
And if they negotiate at a better price, it gives us the opportunity to listen to two prices? If they say it's comparable...
Well, you have to decide whether you're going to go with this one prior to, so if there's a different scope of work, possibly, you maybe can direct, uh, staff to go back and review the scope of work with a reduced scope of work, to see what that will produce. We can bring it back to council. If you decide that that's not something you'd like to do, then we would, um, cancel negotiations with this firm, and then proceed with the second-ranked firm, and then bring that back to council.
What, what has the Florida statute done that? Because it, it just baffles me that we are not being fiscally responsible, we're looking at it while we think these guys sound really better on paper, we did an interview, but then all of a sudden it comes to the fees, one could be three hundred thousand, the other could be the seven hundred and forty-nine thousand. They're almost perfect, they're very, I mean, it looked like the scores were pretty close to each other. That's what I feel like is missing, is why can't we have the opportunity to have both of them even bid out, and then provide the best one that we think overall with, with finances? And again, this is out of my area, but I don't know what the statute is to, to take a look at that.
I'll be happy to send that to you.
Thank you.
Um, question, I think originally when you first opened your comments, you said that there was an ordinance to adopt the Florida statute, or something like that? Do we have the freedom to change an ordinance to have more options? I mean...
Well, if it's a Florida statute, we don't...
Yes, it's a Florida statute.
We have to agree with the Florida statute.
We have to, and that's why I wanna...
It's not really one of those choices, it's like...
Yes.
Okay.
And it's specifically stated in our ordinance that we have to comply with it.
But that's, I, I personally would like to say, and, and I agree with Mike, this is so frustrating to let this wait, and let this wait, and let this wait, but they even have eighteen months, and I can't see how a study takes eighteen months when we need something to be done yesterday, and the government takes so long, but I personally, I wanna take a look at that Florida statute. I think this price is super high, I know you're saying that might be, and it might be, I might be completely wrong, but I don't know how anybody else feels that this is such a huge amount of money right now, and what else could we be doing with that money? Instead of just saying, oh, the study, we did this study just like two thousand eight or whatever, we spent all this money on a study that we found out was way too expensive for us to do. I think that's where I, I wanna wrap my head around, you know, what are we using our taxpayer dollars on? We want to figure out a system, but can we figure out a better way to do this? Is there another option?
I just want to reiterate, the solicitation documents were based on the, um, desires of city council, uh, what the citizens are wanting, they're wanting, um, flooding to stop, so you're asking us to, um, get a study done that's gonna take a look at everything and try to come up with a solution. That's what the solicitation documents were. The evaluation committee looked at the qualifications of the individual, um, consultants, and based on our experience, that, what that was made on, based on our qualifications, not a price, right? So one of the things, Brian, um, also wanted to mention is that the, there, I'll just let you take that, the grant portion of it.
Yeah, I just want, I'm sure you may have noticed in there, there's also grant services included in there where they'll be searching for grants and stuff to help us fund these, these projects. Because I'm, I'm sure they're going to be large-scale. You know, a lot of them could be large-scale and expensive.
I think that's one of the things that they're trying to do here is help us with our, our flooding. So I agree, there should be, but it doesn't matter whether it's this, this firm or a different engineering firm. I'm sure that they would all be looking at helping us with grants.
Do, where would this money come from? Is it in the budget?
Well, we allocate, back in last year, we allocated 125,000 for it. But then we also agreed that we were going to take some of the special exception, you know, to help. But I, I think, I'm special usage, sorry, special usage funds to help, which was like a little over a million dollars. But I wasn't expecting that that was going to be, the majority of it was going to be used just to get a study done. I was hoping that we were putting that money aside to actually take action, not to, you know, spend this money for a study that is very expensive. And like, again, it's out of my area of expertise. I just can't believe that last year, we recommended only 125,000 for the study. And all of a sudden, we come today and it's 749.
Kristen Simio, Finance Director. So currently, the additional funds that would have been needed for the study would have had to come from the project. Because the project included design, engineering as well. So we would have had to use some of those special use funds. You did increase it, like we talked about, from moving the, some funds from, yeah, the Fishville funds over to that project as well.
My question is, do we see a way that we can make this better? Yes, we, we said we want the flooding to stop. But that doesn't mean that we want the flooding to stop without a drop. You know, we have to take action protecting our homes, you know, in, in all areas, you know, the tiger dams and things like that. We'll never stop the flooding. But let's try to figure out a study, taking a look at previous records of what we have. I guess that's what I'm, I'm thinking. It, it seems like we're giving somebody old records that they might look and go, I don't want to do that. We're going to charge this kind of money. Don Harrelson, did you have something that you were going to say? I know you were trying to say something.
Don Harrelson, for the record. I moved here in 2010. At that point in time, the city was several years into a, and you might have more information on this, but several years into a three-phase project, portion of which was for flood control along the waterfront in Punta Gorda. One of the first people I met when I first moved here was a gentleman named Bill Stubber, who was the lead engineer, professional engineer for a firm that had offices in Fort Myers. He was brought in, he was a vested partner in the engineering firm. He'd been previously working in Texas. And as you remember, in 2010, we were at the tail end of a mortgage meltdown and economic crisis. And the city canceled the third phase of this program. And this is a place where we should first go back and review what was canceled. Now, Bill Stubber currently lives in Asheville. I speak to him on the phone occasionally. He's a really wonderful individual. And I, I think, from an educational standpoint, we could get someone like a Bill Stubber, if not Bill Stubber, and several other flood engineers. And let's bring them in, three or four of them. And, and just let them brainstorm publicly in terms of conceptual ideas that we might be able to look at. And, and that, I think, would help formulate a path forward. Jumping into 750,000 engineering studies, much like the Taj Mahal engineering money, is Alice in Wonderland falling down the rabbit hole. I have some personal reservations about Kimley Horn. And they hoodwinked this city once before. And that's all I'm going to say on that topic. I think we need informal engineering advice before we jump into spending a lot of money on formal engineering consultant projects. This is a very complicated issue. And I think Bill would be able to offer, and I think other engineers like Bill would be able to offer a heavy dose of reality in terms of what can and cannot be done and what this might end up costing us in a long-term project. We may find that mitigation is the best we're going to be able to do. Mother Nature is a pretty powerful force. And if, if the most logical approach is to look at mitigating damages, that's the route to go. I, I don't know, I mean, I could talk to you for much longer, but I think you got my general idea. Thank you.
I appreciate your suggestions, Don. You know, I would like to see what we can do to follow up on John's advice, especially with a man who's been involved in the past.
As much as I hate to delay this much-needed project, I, I kind of wish I would have heard this months ago, that we had something in the works. And, and I feel bad that I didn't do my homework enough to know that there, there was a phase that started going. But I would like to see this, and I, I agree, we've got some great engineers around here who might just want to, you know, take this, look at it, study it before we have something formal and, and say, you're right, maybe mitigation is the best way to go. Like, you know, helping people elevate their homes and things like that. But to me, I, I just can't, personally, I, I just can't see 749,000 for this at this point.
I would just caution that if we are looking for opinions from other engineers to review previous studies, will that be on a basis of donation or of donation of their time? Because if they want, if they're going to help develop the specifications, Florida law says that they're not allowed to bid. So I would just caution in that, that arena.
I think we've got a lot of retired engineers who would love to put their two cents in, you know, just volunteer work. I think we could probably find somebody, a few people.
I just didn't, I just wanted to put that statement out there because there are Florida statutes that do prevent that. If someone helps us build specifications, they're not allowed to bid on the project. So I didn't want to, to make it not available to anybody who would be interested.
Thank you for that.
So what would be the appropriate way to move forward? Table this, move not to approve it right now? What's the best way to, or just put it up for a motion and see how we all vote?
I, personally, if, if we can get some documentation and then consider, we need to have a feeler out to see what residents, what engineers, people who are not interested in actually doing the work would want to help us, you know, look at what we've had for our studies, where we are at, what does the third phase look like? We know it's been years and it's going to cost a heck of a lot more, but at least it kind of gives us an idea.
So what do we do with 6H?
Well, if you don't approve it, we can't do 6I. But that's just what we're saying. Are we going to move forward or do we need, do we need more information?
I would like more information.
If, if I may, one of the, one of the things that gentleman really brought forth is that it is a very complicated situation. There's, if it was an easy fix on the surface, that somebody from the outside could come and take a look at, we would have already thought about that, moved forward on it. It's, it's got, it's, it's a deeper dive than just a surface look at by someone who may be not familiar with it.
When's the last time we looked at the phase? When's the last time that this phase, all the phases were looked at? So nobody here in, in public works, we haven't looked at those phases?
I would have to dive deeper into that. I'm not sure what Phase Three is that he's alluding to at this point in time.
Brian, you have looked at the, at the previous studies?
I've looked at, yeah, I've looked at the 2008, the 2012. I, there was, in one of, I think the 12, there was one pump that wasn't installed. That's on the, I don't remember the exact, I know it's east of 41. One pump, that's the only thing I know that was.
Otherwise, they thought that was going to fix all the flooding damage.
You know, that doesn't impact.
Right.
The entire downtown.
Right. I personally would like it to go out and be rebid.
Is it possible, Janine Polk, for the record, is it possible just to put it out for bid again? And, I mean, how long was it out for bid? Several weeks? And you had, how many people that acquired or?
There were two, two local firms. Florida statute says that if we're not able to negotiate an acceptable agreement with the top-ranked firm, then we would automatically go to the second. And I'll be happy to send you the statutes.
I think we need to do that.
I do too, yes. So do we have a motion?
Can I say something procedurally? That may, you know, to comply with the Florida statutes, you could table this matter to gather more information. That way, it just doesn't kick Kimley Horn out of the picture. That's my concern in complying with the statutes is that if you just table this to your next general meeting, at least they're still in the discussion.
But then how do we get the second opinion? I mean, the second person? If we, if we don't do that, how do we get more information from the second person qualified?
Well, can't we, can't we get a presentation from the evaluation board that, that looked at both of the applicants and, and then understand it a little better?
It doesn't talk about the finances of it, though. That's the problem. We're looking at how much it costs. We can understand the presentation and how they said this, we like this presentation.
I do understand the price. But if you want to understand the process that they went through to come to the conclusion that they did, that would be helpful.
That's the statute that we'll be looking at. But again, in order for us to, to either deny or accept it, we have to deny it now. Let me ask you this, what if we come back with the second person and they're just the same or they're even more? We deny that, do they both?
Then we would have to go back. You can obtain additional information and then we would go back out to bid.
And then they could reapply again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's not like it's completely throwing them out?
If the scope is changed dramatically.
Right.
But I agree with the attorney at this, at this stage, that maybe table the information. If you'd like, maybe a presentation from the engineering firm to, to kind of understand more of the methodology of this and the scope of work that was presented by the department, that could be a possibility as well.
It still doesn't talk about the fees.
Right.
And that is the biggest thing right now is the fees. I don't want to delay it to have a presentation for us just to say, yes, we're going to accept the 749. I, I really think we need to look at the fees.
Right, and a reduction in the scope of work will, can, can bring forth that, that end result as well. If that is what's needed in this circumstance to reduce the scope, that can also happen in this circumstance.
Can you send us the scope that you sent out?
I'm sorry?
Can we, can we have a copy of the scope, all the criteria, everything that you're looking at?
I will send that to Melissa and, and copy everyone, along with the statutes.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to table this and do some more research on our own. And also, I mean, it's going to be 18 months anyway, so.
A second then.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to table this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries.
And that was for 6H and 6I?
Yes.
Okay, 6J. Okay, 6J is an agreement to Colin Bezinger, sorry if I said that wrong, an associate for the executive search for the city manager. Procurement issued a request for proposal based on the solicitation requirements received. The solicitation notices were sent to 789 vendors, 23 viewed it, and we received five responses. Four of the responses received were rejected because they did not meet the solicitation requirements. The total lump sum of the project is 32,500. However, the original proposal was 34,500. We were able to negotiate it down 2,000. You know, the, the timeline would be approximately 13 weeks after issuance of the notice to proceed. And the four responses that were rejected were because of the requirements of the solicitations that were previously reviewed with the department that we wanted to see three Florida municipality references for city manager. So that was included. And again, this was more of a detailed process. It was a request for a proposal. It's kind of a combination process of the CCNA guidelines. It's based on criteria and pricing. The criteria was published within the solicitation document.
Discussion?
Well, I mean, we got a lot of, Janine Polk, for the record, we got a lot of really positive comments. I'm just wondering, why are we spending 32,000? That's just me. I feel like we've got the person here that we need in place. She's been more than accommodating. She's been more than anything I could have ever imagined. I'm, I don't, I don't, I don't know why we would spend 32,000 to search for someone else. Just my thoughts, thank you.
I actually agree with Janine. You think about the, for an example, the dating sites, while they look great on paper, then all of a sudden, you meet them and you date them and they're still great. And then all of a sudden, you marry them and what happens? I think after, I know, I'm sorry, that's the best way I can explain it. I think, looking at Dr. Reichert, what she has accomplished as two full-time positions, how we have less people quitting, we have more production happening, we've had smiling faces. I did not hear one resident say something that. I, in fact, I've never, I get all these emails from people saying, why are you even spending our money to hire somebody? I understand, you know, you're supposed to be looking at things. She's had a proven track record. And do you think us finding, looking for anybody else is going to, to find anybody better than, than this?
And let's not forget, Janine Polk, again, for the record, she did work here before our previous city manager. And she was under the previous city manager, Howard Kunitz. So she's been here enough years that I feel like she knows the city, you know, more than anybody who could ever come in here and learn about the city. And to develop relationships with employees, that takes a long time to do. That would set us back also. So where do we go from here?
When we agreed to put this out for solicitation, we said, this is the most important decision we're going to make in this term. And, and that we agreed that we would use a firm to help us with that search. I'm not sure what's changed since then, other than.
She's been working with us?
What's changed is nine months of success.
There, there are residents that are still asking to, to do the search. Are we just going to ignore that?
I didn't hear one of them in here state that.
Janice Dinton, I have heard from residents who would like us to take a professional approach, not just, I mean, Melissa has, Dr. Reichert has done a great job, I agree. But we, but we don't know that she's the best person for the job. And I don't like spending 32,000, but how many dollars have we saved by not having Greg Murray with us for all these months? So that's probably a wash when you count the 75,000 we had to pay him. So, and if, if Melissa is chosen, Dr. Reichert is chosen, we could ask the firm to, if it's an in-house choice, that they reduce their fee by half. And I think that's standard in the industry because they don't have to do the background check, there's other things. And, and she may very well be the choice. And if we do go with a firm and she is the choice, then we have utmost confidence in her and in, and representing our voters and our residents that we've done all of our thorough research. So I understand both sides of it. But I, I think that I want us to consider going through the process.
So when you, when you talk about a firm, I know that at the beginning, we were having, like, people left and right giving us their resumes and stuff like that, these local people. I can tell you, none of them held a candlelight. And we want somebody who understands our city, who's going to stay here, who isn't going, I'm going to get vested for five years and leave. You know, we want somebody who. You know, we want somebody who actually understands our flooding issues, how our town operates and stuff like that. You think that we're going to find anybody else around in this area that's going to fit that bill? That's going to be a very difficult thing. And, and I'm sorry, you have to look at her taking two full-time jobs and actually getting everything done. Yes, we're looking at what, what we think is best because this is critical. What has Dr. Reichert done that we have not said, wow, this is amazing? Nothing. She's done everything for us. How often does that happen where we've got somebody guiding our city and, and helping us, a new council, to move forward like this? Sorry, well, open up, public, public opinion, public speech here. Please state your name first.
Employees, don't be afraid. Come on, staff.
I'm going from memory, but if I recall correctly, aside from normal HR functions, the city charter clearly states the selection of the city manager resides solely with the city council.
That's right.
Now, I understand that opening it up through normal HR procedures looks good from a diplomacy standpoint, and it looks like it has worked. But if Melissa Reichert is interested in the job, she's a known quantity, and I think it would expediate a lot of other issues if we could just move on. And give her nice pay rates, too.
Good afternoon, everybody, Chief Pan Smith. I do want to also advocate for Dr. Reichert. We went through those hurricanes and I was in direct contact with her every day. She answered immediately. She's very open and, and listens to our employees and willing to work with us. And I think she's doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Wendy Mueller. One of the things that you may be forgetting when you hear or heard the public react to hire a management firm, that type of thing. One of their, one of the public's complaints is things aren't moving fast enough. The marina's not done. The lights aren't, the sewers, the, just that and the next thing. And who gets blamed? Well, if it isn't the police or the fire department, it's the city manager. The council are just, sorry for this, but just a bunch of locals, you know, they're nobody. City manager really never gets any credit for what they do because they're in the background cracking a whip. I want you to keep that in mind because the general public that writes to you a lot of times isn't the people that sit here in the crowd, wig in and wig out and listen and go to board meetings. Those people are the ones that are advocating for Melissa because they actually have seen what's taken place in a much shorter period of time than we were used to in the past.
Kristen Simeone, Finance Director. I would also say that Melissa does talk to all the directors, listens to both sides, tries to weigh that against what funding we do have and making recommendations and understanding that things may change in the future as well as what citizens are input is provided and council input. So that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Ashley Amolinski-Carty, spur of the moment, but I've been with the city four years. I've been working with Melissa, Ms. E since May. And the transition going to, from code to city manager's office has been completely smooth. I'm pretty sure I could say also on behalf of Kylie, who was before me, that Ms. E is the absolute best person that we can have as city manager. She not only listens to staff, the directors, the community as a whole, I think would be a big mistake if we don't make her city manager official.
Thank you.
Jeff Payne, HR Manager. And I'm not going to advocate one way or the other, right? I'm HR, so I'm neutral. But I would say even if we go with Melissa, let's do the full background check. There's a lot of liability there if you, if you skip the background. Not that we're going to find anything, but we'll have done our due diligence, right? Now, as far as this Colin Bezinger, right? They do give a guarantee on the placement so that if we're not happy with whoever's chosen, they'll do a second search for us and all those things and didn't necessarily go into the details on. So there, there are some guarantees built into that as well.
And what kind of background checks do you do through the city when you employ someone?
Yeah.
We only do it for the high-profile positions like police, fire, or city manager, something like that.
Okay, and is it the gold standard? What is, what is it that you do for a background check? Do you use FDLE? Who, who does that?
Oh, you hire a background firm to do that. That's all they do is run backgrounds, right? So they verify previous employment certifications. They'll run, you know, criminal history and all those kind of things.
Well, we probably kind of know the last nine years.
Just saying. Cover your bases. It would be very embarrassing if there was something there and we didn't do it.
Thank you for that.
William Prosha for the record, Ponte Cuna resident. The former city manager got high accolades for the job he did during the Ian storm. He was just doing his job. He was a blowhard. Don't let her get away. Don't waste any more money or time. She's doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, we're, we're at a pivotal time right now of all that we've been through. And, you know, it, to get someone who comes in here and really understands the job and understands where we, where we are, you know, that, you know, that's, that's, that's a real gamble that you're going to have somebody who's really going to know what they're getting into. It would take them a year to get acclimated to what we got going on. You know, the, Melissa's been here. She was with Kunitz. And I can tell you, when Kunitz was in here, and he gets a lot of flack, but our tag space was cut in half from 2008 to 2013. I don't foresee that happening, but you can tell, you know, we're not riding that COVID wave anymore. And the days of sitting there and leaving the mill dray the same and watching the assessed values go up could be over. So, you know, I think we need someone who understands the problem and, and understands what we're up against. And I think we've got that person in place right now. And I think we'd be taking some risks by hiring somebody that, that doesn't, is not familiar with our situation. And I just, I think, hey, you know, the, the 35, 40,000, whatever it is, is not as big an issue as, you know, getting the wrong person. Because I kept hearing about how great the last guy was. And he was an intelligent guy and I liked him. But he couldn't answer questions. You know, if you put a hard question to him, he gave you the word salad, as Melissa likes to say. And he didn't answer a question. I actually went to meetings and watched him, Mitchell, and the city attorney not answer the question. And I think, you know, we got a person here that can answer the question, that knows the city in and out. And I think that's what we need to move the city forward. And we're in a pivotal, pivotal time right now that I don't think we can afford to pivot in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Holden Gibbs, Fire Chief. I just want to say, I, I know that Melissa knows the community. She knows the residents. She knows what, what they need. She has a great relationship with the employees. She's done a great job as far as, you know, stepping in and, and being there, even through the storm. She's tried and true. You know where she stands and, and she's done a great job. So I don't think you could ask for anybody better.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Brad Schudy, Information Technology Manager. I would like to add to what everybody else has been saying that in the time that I've had to work as the, the head of technology for the city with Melissa, her understanding, her ability to ask pertinent questions and learn rapidly under fire has been, has been great to work with. She, she hears us, she listens to us. She has shown that she has the ability to weigh both sides of the question. And I believe that choosing, going out for the process and choosing someone else at this point in time is going to set the city back two years. We, we don't have time to let somebody come up to speed to adjust their agenda to our agenda and to try and figure out where that fit is going to be. Melissa understands where the city has been, understands where the city is now, and understands where the city needs to go. And I think she would be the best candidate to lead us there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Figuring, you know, Brad has said, I agree. Melissa listens to all of us as directors, listens to our, our staff, very open to ideas and discussions, providing feedback, excellent communicator and, and very transparent and open. Putting, putting this out for a search would, would just be, in my opinion, a waste of time. Melissa's absolutely excellent. She believes in our, in our staff and our city and what we have and what we can do in the future. So that's my support.
Thank you.
Mirroring on whatever one else says, Melissa has been a phenomenal leader. And she's very supportive of all the initiatives that I've wanted to bring forth in Public Works. She's told me when I'm doing things that I shouldn't be doing and she's encouraging me to do the right things. And she's a phenomenal person. Everybody in Public Works would give her full support for that vote.
Thank you.
Bill Page. I think Greg made a good point, but that was, all those calls for citizen involvement was six months, eight months ago. And I haven't heard or seen much of that at all recently. And if we go through a complete process, there's no way it's going to be completed within six months. And I just don't see it being a benefit. I think, to me, the experts in making that decision are sitting up there because they have to work with you. She has to work with you. And I think you know what you've got. And I think you just need to, excuse the phrase, man up and make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, Boyd Lawrence, Planning Director. And with still being relatively new, what I can say in the most short period of time is accountability, working with Melissa, especially in responses to residents and businesses in town. We get a great deal of requests that come through zoning and urban design and also to you, the city council. When your requests go through her, they immediately come to us to try to respond. She makes sure that we do get those responses to you. And I know the rest of the staff in the department supports her as well. Thank you.
Thank you. You have Jennifer coming up? Rachel?
Good afternoon, Rachel Berry, zoning official for the record. I will second what everyone else has said. Ms. E has been great to work with. Suggestion, if we want to go with the search firm, maybe we use that for the assistant manager once interim is taken off of her title?
It's a good idea.
Jennifer Falconer, Deputy City Clerk. The comment that I wanted to make was sort of larger than advocating for or against having Dr. Reichert as the city manager and goes more to a personal concern that I think piggybacks on Councilmember Julian's comment about decisions being made in an equitable, objective way rather than being subject to a same-day advocacy on one action or the other. And my personal feeling is that while I initially disagreed with council's decision to go forward with the search firm, I respected the rationale for that decision, which was wanting to find the best candidate. I also appreciate that nine months is a long time to show true colors and to be able to find additional support. So like I said, my biggest thing is just that I would encourage the council to continue, continue keeping equitable, transparent, and objective decisions as a core foundation of how they conduct themselves. That being said, I couldn't advocate more strongly for Dr. Reichert to be the city manager. I think she's an incredible asset to the city, effective at communicating with residents, staff on topics for or against. I mean, she is instrumental in being able to move projects forward because of her ability to communicate with everyone from every walk of life. So my position on whether or not she would be the best city manager has not changed from day one. So I wanted to make that clear. But to say that my concern lay more with council making decisions based on the vocalization of a few while not, potentially not considering outside opinions that were not voiced at the time. Thank you.
For the record, Harvey Goldberg of Ponte Cuna. As Councilmember Polk said earlier at the beginning of this meeting, I've been here and around a long time. I've gone through, when I said gone through, I've worked with four different city managers in the city of Ponte Cuna, going back to 2021. We are not going to find anyone any better if we do even a worldwide search, mostly statewide or regional, whatever, than, than Dr. Reichert. From an outsider's standpoint, from working on the city council's standpoint, working with city staff and other organizations, my opinion, my experience, Dr. Reichert has all the goods that she needs. She brings it all to the table and brings it to the benefit of the city and all its residents. Thank you.
Glad, Wendy. Supposed to only have one time, but come on.
This is my second half. I used to run a business. I have never, ever, in the 10 years that I've been attending city council meetings, ever heard every single staff member that's in charge be on the same page. What a compliment. That is what you need. That's the leader. Thanks.
I couldn't have said that better. Thank you, Wendy. I'm looking at is, I didn't hear one staff member, like, like Wendy said, say anything bad. In fact, it was all wonderful. And these are the people who, they, that she works with. And we have the right to make the decisions because it's our decision to hire or not hire. So right now, we can make the decision on what we want to do.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we go ahead and make Dr. Reichert our city manager officially.
Does that have to be on the agenda?
Nope, we make the decision. We can do whatever we want. Greg, I'm handing you the gavel. I'll make the second. You're in charge now.
Do we have a second?
I made the second.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't, did you say?
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
I know, we'll do a background check.
Thank you, everyone. This is just absolutely humbling, and as it isn't about me, it's about the people up here, it's about all of you that spoke on my behalf, my goodness. It's just truly an honor to serve the people of Punta Gorda and to work alongside the people that I get the great pleasure of working with every single day. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now that we have a motion, we need to get down to the details of how this is going to happen. Okay, so, at a previous meeting, the mayor had indicated she wanted to review the job description. Are we going to put that on a future meeting, and we're just going to leave the job description as it is?
So, we should be changing our job description to look for an assistant city manager?
That's not a job description. A job description details the duties and functions of the job.
Okay. I think with you being the new city manager, do you want to help out with that?
All right, so council does not want to review the job description then? We're in?
No.
Okay, all right. And then, of course, charter requires that they be a resident of the city, and I don't know if Melissa's moved into the city or not.
I have not yet, and I respectfully request six months to make that move.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so the question is, does she remain interim until she gets that done, or can she go ahead and be put in the position with a grant of six months? That would be a Leskovich question.
How much time was it whenever you hired, like, Mr. Murray? How much time did he have to move down here?
Mr. Murray had a residence, and so...
So, she could run something, saying that she lives there, and then?
Absolutely, yes. I mean, it doesn't have to be fancy, right? It's just something, right? So, that's something we just have to work out, right?
Mr. Leskovich, can we award her time to find a new place? Obviously, this is not something that she expected to have happen today. Can we award her six months' time to move into the city?
The proper thing legally, you can, if I'm not mistaken, if, I believe Mr. Julian either abstained or didn't vote.
I didn't.
He could ask for a reconsideration of the vote because you can't be named your full-time city manager and not be a resident. So, we've already had a motion, a second, and a vote.
To hire.
To hire. He could ask for a reconsideration to reopen it, to revote, to reopen it, to make her, you would have to keep the title as interim city manager, conditioned upon her getting residency within the city of Punta Gorda, and upon her getting residency, you know, give her six months or three months, she would be named permanent city manager.
So, to clarify, you're saying that she stays as interim city manager until she finds a residence here, and then we can name her city manager?
Yeah, you would have to reopen your vote from previous.
I have no intention to reconsider the vote.
Because you're, you could make a second motion then.
So, I need a second motion?
No, 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 a different motion that provides for her being city manager upon full residency in the city of Punta Gorda.
Did the last city manager not have a bit of time before you officially assume those duties, where he had a full-time residency here?
Mr. Murray went ahead and started while Mr. Koenig was still here, and so that gave him a little bit of grace to find his apartment before he assumed the full city manager duties.
So...
Do you want to amend my motion?
No, we'll just make a new motion.
Okay.
I think to state that we're going to, and my thought is to give her up to six months, but if she finds a residence sooner, that that would be the time that she would become city manager. I mean, does that sound correct?
Okay, so I make a motion that we allow Dr. Riker six months in order to have full residency within the city as required by the job description.
I second that.
The city charter, I'm sorry, city charter.
Please second.
Save a motion and a second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries.
All right. Now, as far as salary goes, PRR says that you get 8% for one grade and 1% for each additional grade. I didn't have time to go check the grades to see how much of a raise that would give her. Is that how you want to handle this, or do you want to negotiate a salary, or what do we want to do in that respect?
I'd like to look at that a little bit further. I mean, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, this kind of happened, happenstance, but could we get that in front of us soon, and then, and maybe by the next meeting, and then if we have to do anything retroactive, we could do that too, but...
Of course. Yes, that sounds perfect.
Okay.
Okay, and then as far as the contract goes, am I authorized to go ahead and work with the labor attorney to get a contract put together then? That would be very similar to what we've used in the past?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then I think you were giving me direction to go ahead and post a assistant city manager position?
I think that would probably be very beneficial.
I am giving you permission to do that because that position is authorized, and...
And that's under the...
No, you're my purview.
All right, so, just give me a requisition for that, and we'll get that.
We'll do that.
All right. I think that's all I had, unless you guys have thought of something that I missed.
Awesome. Thank you. So, I'm going to say that we are denying the agreement for a search for a city manager then. Is that correct?
Right.
Great. Okay, 6K award amendment to Corolo Engineers.
First, let me say, congratulations, Dr. Riker. You must be overwhelmed with all the support that you heard today.
It's amazing. Thank you, Ann.
Okay, the final one is a continuance of the single source with Central Square Technologies for the purchase and integrated software products, maintenance, and support. In 2012, procurement solicited... Oh, yeah, sorry. No, I have it, thank you. You just tagged along with the other one. I apologize for that. Around 6K, it's an award of amendment to Corolo Engineers to provide construction engineering services for the water treatment plant chemical feed system improvements. In 2019, a master agreement was awarded to Corolo Engineers for public water supply. The agreement included hourly rates for negotiation of specific authorizations. Staff requested a proposal based on those rates and in order to provide construction engineering services for the water treatment plant chemical system improvements. The construction services include project management, quality control, construction meetings, approval of pay requests, review, inspection services, and project closeout. Total cost of the authorization is a not-to-exceed authorization. There are a number of tasks that we requested them to be not to exceed, hopefully to save some funds and not utilize all them, particularly they were RFI requests from the contractor for clarification on plan submittals, review of submittals, reviewing and approving change orders and field orders, and then the engineering inspection services. All of those are, we've changed to a not-to-exceed, so we can try to save some funds there. The total cost of the authorization currently is $285,970. The timeframe for completion of this project is 12 months from the notice to proceed. Staffs recommending approval to Corolo Engineers.
Any discussion?
Move to approve 6K?
Please second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. They can.
Thank you. And finally, we have the single source with Central Square Technologies for integrated software products, maintenance, and support. In 2012, procurement issued an intended decision to sole source for the purchase of software maintenance support for the city's embedded technology. The software is proprietary to Central Square. Therefore, the maintenance and support would be through the single source as well. In 2012, it was approved, the annual expenditure was approved for $211,000, and that increased to $396,560 in 2020. With the additional expenditures for '24, '25, '25, '26, and a contingency of approximately $16,000, the Information Technology Department is requesting an increase to the approval authority of $490,000.
If you have any questions regarding the software, Brad is here to answer those.
What is parking ticket? Seal-to-go parking ticket? Oh, sorry.
Brad Schudie, IT Manager. The parking tickets is a module that they've recently developed that does a better job of managing and integrating our parking citation management. Right now, it's done as a miscellaneous receipt, and this actually formalizes the module and makes it easier to track and just maintain the handling of parking citations.
So, this actually would be beneficial if we start charging fees for the marina and stuff like that as well, then?
Well, those are probably handled under another section, but it's, the boating, there's a, they're working on multiple things. The boating citations are a separate piece that they're working on. It's not a formalized module, it's a new part of an existing process. This is actually a new module that they've generated to, specific to parking citations.
So, this is a $20,000 annual fee, or is this a long-time fee?
If it's listed there separate, it's probably the annual fee. That'll, that's the maintenance for that software. I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
So, my question is, then, how many tickets we give out offsets this fee?
That I'm not sure. I can, I'll have to research that. I don't know.
I mean, it sounds like it's really cool technology, but then, if we're not giving out that many tickets, is it worth having this technology? Sorry.
No, that's something that I, I would have to research and bring the answer back to council on that because the, it was, we were requested to move forward with the acquisition of that module as part of what Central Square does, the services it offers, by clerks and PD, and I can, I can go back and research the particulars of the cost.
I would hate to hold up this progress for that detail. I think we should proceed.
Well, we can proceed with it with, you know, a condition of looking to see if that's really necessary.
And that was just one example. There are multiple pieces that we've added recently to the Central Square that's the reason for us raising the cap on cost. It's not just this one particular piece.
Perfect. Unless you'd like to reduce the amount of the approval authority to 470, and we can bring that $20,000 piece back, or give the city manager the authority to see if that is something that is beneficial to the city and keep the $490,000 authority.
Sorry. Deputy City Clerk Jennifer Faulkner, to your question, Mayor Lux, from the clerk's perspective, because of the clerk's offices where people pay for the parking citations, I would say that on average, our department processes somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 parking tickets a week, and it has, it's a steady, a steady stream of folks who are coming in to pay for those, and the current system does require several extra steps to ensure that all the departments, finance, and PD are notified of those payments, and this would streamline things and avoid the risk of human error of forgetting to do steps three and four, because this would be a more streamlined process, so if that's helpful to your consideration.
That is very helpful, thank you.
Move to approve then? Okay, 6M?
Please second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you for the great explanation, too. Okay, next, reaffirming the Charlotte County City of Punta Gorda Local Mitigation Strategy.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, reaffirming the Charlotte County City of Punta Gorda Local Mitigation Strategy as the formal guide for hazard mitigation activities.
Good afternoon, Runka Howitz, Building Official. Do you have any questions on this? What this is for is for our CRS credits. We are way behind, we are way behind on a lot of things, so this is needed years ago, and we'll probably have to do it to get it another couple of months.
Okay.
So, the audit comes up every five years, and they're currently, we're currently going through ours, but there are changes in theirs too as well, so, but it's desperately needed at the moment.
Thank you.
I move to approve 6M.
Please second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, discussion for council with the draft of the Builders Association.
Yes, as was mentioned at a previous meeting, we never got a formal vote from council as to whether or not they wanted to move forward to go into negotiations to generate a lease with the CDBIA. So, that's what I'm looking for at this time, or if you'd like to have further discussion, that's what this agenda item is about, and then if you would also like to have any discussions about the future use for the facility.
Greg?
Yes, I'd like to have a discussion about the other options, perhaps just selling it, and selling it to somebody under the provisions that it be maintained as a historic building where it is, and just not have that responsibility any further. We have to make up a public purpose for it, and I don't, I don't think that's really beneficial. Managing properties is not our forte.
So, isn't that land, our land? It's the city of Punta Gorda's land, right? So, it would be a land lease. It would actually not be a good idea, I don't think, for that house. The house is only 1,700 square feet. Everyone's acting like it's a 10,000-square-foot building. It's a 1,700-square-foot home. I think we can handle it. I don't think it's going to cost us, you know, $10,000, $20,000 a year to take care of it. I feel like, because I'm meeting people out at lunch, and I end up paying for lunch, because that's what I'm supposed to do, I end up beating them out at coffee bars, I end up, you know, going to the park and meeting them, I would love a place that I would have once a week, a little office, we don't have any offices, to meet constituents and to just kind of enjoy the atmosphere of that history in this town, and not for anything else, but my husband's family actually lived in that house. His great-great aunt lived in that house, so it means a lot to the city, and I am absolutely not okay with saying that we're going to just sell it at this point.
So, my thought too is, even if we, Floyd was selling it, it's just like somebody who buys a fixer-upper. We're fixing it up to sell it for even a better price if we ever thought about doing that down the road, and I think it's been very generous of the Builders Association and Mr. Thornberry to even promote this cost, that if we try to do it privately, it would cost us a lot more money. So, I think for the benefit of the city, it actually is really good for us to continue going forward with this, and to know that maybe in the future, if we're finding that we don't need the office space or anything anymore, then we could consider selling it for even more of a price, and right now, the market isn't that great for selling something. So, I agree with you, Janine. I think we should keep it.
And, you know, this is a CDBIA, I mean, what better, you know, group of people to get together than the local builders? It's just like an old, you know, it's what they did back in the day. They got together with their local people, they put it together. I think this is awesome. They got together with their local people, they put it together, I think this is awesome.
Yeah, it's a very generous offer, and I very much appreciate it. I think we, we can move ahead, but keep all options on the table down the road, see how it works. And if it does, I mean, things never cost as little as you think, they always cost more for maintenance. Think about just the yard work alone on that place, and the fence and everything. But hey, look, I think it's a, it is an asset, and, but it might not be one that works for us forever, who knows?
So do you have, oh, Craig?
I'm glad to hear that CDBIA is recognized as a beneficial organization to our community, and, and I do appreciate their generous offer to take care of this. I'm not opposed to it, but I, we never talked about other options.
I'm sorry, Donna, yeah, come on in.
Donna Barrett, Executive Officer of the Charlotte de Soto Building Industry Association. First, it's great to come to keep, to the table to fix a project such as the Freeman Home. I was there the day that it was actually moved right to that corner. And, you know, that home has such meaning, you know, it's, it's part of our history. It's a Queen Anne-style home. You can't move it until it does get fixed. There's a cost factor and all of that, that it's going to take time. You know, respect, respectfully, you can still look at what the uses are going to be, or if you have to move it, it still needs to get fixed. And the longer that it stays mothball, the more damage you could have in that home. You know, we have many of our leaders within the Charlotte de Soto Building Industry Association that are wanting to help, and they want to fix this home. So you can still have, like Councilman Julian was talking about, you can still look at what those uses are, or even putting it up for sale. But this will give us the opportunity to start moving forward and getting that home fixed. Thank you again, and congratulations, Melissa.
Debbie, can I?
Go ahead.
I just want you guys to know that the lease, Missy and I worked on quite extensively with it, and I was pretty instrumental in drafting that lease, so it came from the city first.
Yes.
Before it is being presented to CDBIA. But part of your agenda item here is to talk about the future use of the building. Doesn't mean you have to come to a decision today, but at least discuss what a future use may be.
I agree, like, Janine, I, I'd like to have a place that I could say, "Meet me here," because people are always like, "I'm going to meet you at your office." I don't have an office.
Yes.
Where do you want to go for coffee? Where do you want to have lunch? You know, so.
Don Hurlston, for the record. Many great cities provide their mayors with a residence, maybe we should just provide this for our city manager.
Yeah, give it to me, yeah. Thanks, Ron.
I have my address, thank you.
Hey, Missy, it could be a good residence for it.
There we go, exactly.
Okay, Mike Oak. You know, this is basically, the cost of this is half of what it was going to be the mothball.
That's right.
Okay, we were going to pay $900 a square foot for the Taj Mahal, as Greg likes to call it, and now we're getting this property that's a landmark. It's on our site, so we got to maintain the site, whether that building's there or not. So you're really talking about maintenance, once they put a new roof on it, new windows, paint it, you're just talking about typical maintenance you'd have at your house, pressure control, AC service, you're not talking about a lot of money. And, and now we have a place, you know, for the city council to meet, or put some other offices there, you know, down the road, if it, if, you know, something comes up and you find a place for the city council. But, you know, there's a lot of people that feel very strongly that the city keeps control of this property, and it's not moved again. I mean, it's been moved twice, okay? I, I used to go to Cub Scouts, and, and my aunt and uncle, my great aunt and uncle did live there in the 40s and 50s, and I went to Cub Scouts there when the Longstruffs lived there, lived there during the 60s and 70s. So I, I'm very familiar with that property. Everybody that grew up in Punta Gorda, it's a landmark, and I just think it'd be a shame for us to lose control of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
One last thing regarding the usages. I, my former life, before I worked for the Builders Association, I worked at the Cultural Center. There is still a void for many activities in our community. You can probably get with either the chamber or your team of putting out a survey for activities that people want. Many of the card games are missing, there's not many places where they have them anymore. There's even yoga classes that can maybe be done in the yard, thinking outside the box. I know that you're looking at usages, I just want to say that there are many different opportunities. Many businesses lost a lot of places where they can have events. And again, it may not be that huge, but that could be another opportunity, just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Before you go, were your questions answered about the payments? Was, was that fixed in the?
So the lease, there are some questions. It hasn't actually gone to the CDBIA board yet. So once we could get an actual specific contract for us, with a lot of the conversations that we've been having back and forth, we received the contract on June 26th. We don't have a board meeting this month, but I'm hoping to get a lot of those answers for some of the questions that were just out there. So once I can get those answers, we'll get that out to the board.
Okay.
Yes, the, this agenda item was merely to move forward with the concept, we're not done with the negotiations of the lease and making sure that their concerns are addressed, and that will come back to you as city council before. We'll, we'll forward it to CBDIA as well, and everyone will get.
CD.
CDBIA, CDBI.
We get accused of enough, we don't need to be anything else.
CDBIA.
CDBIA will be, their board will, will have the opportunity, of course, to approve it as well, but we're just, we're still in the negotiation phase, and this was just the original draft that was attached to the actual agenda item.
Thank you.
In that case, I move to approve, six N.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, rules and procedures. I actually need to take this. Yeah. Is it really bad if we ask to do that for another time? Or do, do we need to get the rules and procedures done today?
Can we do them the next meeting? Greg, how do you feel about that?
I have no issues with the remaining.
I don't have any issues with the remaining either, so. Do you have any issues when you're looking at it for the remaining?
I'm open to discussing.
Can we wait? Oh, you're open to discussion today, okay.
But I have no issues with the remaining rules of procedure.
No, no, I'm sorry, you didn't hear me. So is anyone opposed to moving it to another meeting?
Oh.
No, I, I think what Greg is saying is even if it came today, do you have issues with it that you want to bring forward, or do you, did you?
No, I didn't have any issues with it.
So maybe let's just do it today.
No.
Oh, okay, so you're saying just approve it?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, let's have her come up and just present real quick, and then we can make a motion.
Good afternoon, council. So there, this is the last section of rules. I am completely fine, as is the clerk's office, with if you want to postpone this presentation, it has been postponed a few times already, but that's okay, I understand that there's a lot of things that come ahead of a rules of procedure. If I could get the next slide done, we can go very briefly through.
I was thinking.
Because there were some suggested revisions that are reflected in this presentation. So I just, when you say you want to approve them as is, I just want to put those up, make sure that we're all on the same page, and then we can.
Okay.
Go ahead and get those taken care of. So for the first one, under Rule 41 for public hearings, there was a suggestion to have the, oh, could you advance it to the next slide? Sorry, thank you, thank you. Under 41.4, there was a suggestion to have the presentation times for staff and applicants shortened from 30 minutes to 20 minutes. The public hearings resolution that city council passed in 2022 currently states 30 minutes for presentations. So that would be a change if you wanted to, to go from 20, excuse me, from 30 minutes to 20.
I'm good with the 20 minutes, how about you guys?
I'm good with 20 minutes.
20 is good.
Okay.
20 minutes.
And then, under 41.4.7.1, so if you could advance to the next slide, thank you. There was a suggestion that we remove this rule, the clerk's recommendation would be, just for clarity of procedure, to keep, keep this in about a subsequent motion, so that council or board members would know what to do if the initial motion fails. And having this rule in here as written, it, it does mirror what we have in our board member training materials, so.
That's fine.
Fine.
Okay. So that takes care of Rule 41, and then if you could advance one more, sorry, to Rule 43. So under the discussion items here, there was a suggestion to add some language that stated if, if in the event council wanted to add an item to the agenda that would create a potential financial burden to taxpayers, that that would need to be accomplished by motion rather than just a consensus.
So who determines it? Yeah, I can understand financial burden, that we wouldn't want that, but then.
Sure, I, so I was trying to think of a concrete example to provide here. So if it were something, for example, like, let's use the, the AC Freeman House. If, on a, an agenda where the AC Freeman House wasn't on the agenda, but if someone during council member comment said, "Hey, I would like to add an item about charging residents to use the AC Freeman House for event rentals," that might constitute a potential financial burden, and rather than having just consensus to add that as an item, there would be a motion required to add that item to the agenda. Does that make sense? It's not a very good example, it's just what I came up with off the top of my head, sorry about that. Or if you would like to kind of mull that one over, we can, the clerk's office could do some suggested language for that, and because you will all have to review a final draft with all of the amendments to include, so we can kind of put some suggested language in for the final review, and you could decide at that time.
Sounds perfect, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, and then if you could advance to Rule 45, please? Okay, let me pause there. So here, there was a suggestion to remove references to use of the gavel, and the clerk's office doesn't have any feelings about this one way or other. We would just make the note that it did help for the, for the audio record, so that if we, and, and I know we haven't been using the gavel, every once in a while, it can be difficult to know when something is adjourned or when we're moving on to the next thing, so I think it would just be our recommendation to maybe make that a little bit clearer via the microphones, but we don't have a problem not using the gavel.
Or just make it optional.
Sure. Yeah, we can just add something about optional and add that to the rule. Okay, then if we could advance to Rule 49, please? Under 49.2.1, there was the suggestion to add this language about the presiding officer announcing a result, or announcing the result, excuse me, if a motion fails for lack of a second, and this is again, just to mirror what is in our board member training materials.
That's fine.
Okay. Because if that does happen, it is noted that way in the minutes, so. Okay, if you could advance to Rule 55, please? And I just wanted to point out, for the sake of people following along at home, or council members as you're going through your amended drafts, the only change here was just that under 55.2.1, based on previous revisions, the numbering of the rules had changed, so this was just updated to be, to reflect the correct number of the rule that deals with that topic.
Perfect.
Okay. So if everyone's okay with that. And then Rule 56, please? And same thing, under 56.1.3 and 56.1.4, those rule numbers were just changed to match the content based on previous revisions. And then, if you could advance to the next slide, under 56.5, there was a suggestion to add this rule about the intended length of council meetings. The clerk's only comment on this was, oh, nope, sorry, that's for the next one. We just had a suggestion about moving it to a different rule, but if you wanted, this could be left here, if, if you, if you want to keep it, it could be left here, or it could be moved to Rule 25, which is agenda preparation, or we don't, or you could opt not to have this rule, up to you.
Well, seeing that we've had so many things to go over at every one of our meetings, it feels like, I mean, limiting us to four hours, I think most of our meetings are over four hours, aren't they?
They have been.
Four to six?
Yeah.
Who brought this up?
I think it's, it's intended to last, I think that we had somebody in the audience who kept on saying that we're meeting for too long, but we have, we've come so far, we've done so much, thank you, Dr. Reckert, that I, I see the word intended to last a maximum of four hours, I think the word intended kind of helps us out if we can't always do it, but it would be nice if we could try. And if you want to take it out, that's fine with me, too, I don't care.
I don't have an issue with it.
How do you feel, Greg? I, I feel like taking it out, I mean, we just, why do we need that?
Since I don't care, you don't care, take it out.
Okay, so we have a consensus to just remove that?
Yes, please.
Proposed rule, okay. And then there were, and I apologize that they are not on a slide, but there was also a suggestion to add a rule that basically said if there were a voluminous, voluminous amount of materials to review for a particular agenda item, it was suggested to put in a rule allowing for that agenda item to be split over multiple agendas, or on the sort of flip side of that, to require a, to set a limit on the number of pages per agenda item. There was a suggestion of a maximum of 15 pages per agenda item. So how does council feel about including something in the rules of procedure that either limits the volume of, of materials that are attached in support of an agenda item, or allowing a provision to split an item over multiple agendas if the attachments are a large volume and require lots of review?
Kind of like what we've just done with this one, we split up all 56 rules into different agendas. So, yeah, I think that's good, because trying, sometimes trying to throw so much at it, we might miss something.
How does that work with all the budget documents? I mean, they're.
Right, so I mean, from my personal perspective, just having, you know, viewed council meetings and, and how the agenda is put together by the city manager's office, I think the city manager's office is already doing that to an extent, in terms of, you know, figuring out what items need to go where based on the other items contained in the agenda, the time limits of council members, the timeliness of those agenda items, things like that. So in terms of, and remember, this is a handbook for council members, so if you're fine with leaving that as an administrative task that you ask the city manager's office to be cognizant of, then I don't necessarily think you would need it in the, in the council handbook, but again, it's completely up to the council what you would like.
And the other thing is the land development regulations, when we go over those again, I mean, those are 500 to 1,000 pages.
And hopefully we'll break that up.
Depending on, yeah, hopefully we'll break it up, right?
Yeah, hopefully we'll break it up. I think that's what we're afraid of, is don't, don't give us, you know, all, you know, articles of Chapter 26.
Sure, sure.
Break it up, and I think that's maybe what is intended, just like this, so.
And then if you all are okay with leaving it as an administrative function of the city manager's office in preparing the agendas, then.
Yes.
We can just make sure that that direction is memorialized.
Okay.
Okay, great. And then the last one was a suggestion to add a rule that specifically stated that there would be two workshops annually, or suggested two workshops annually for council to listen to the concerns of residents. I'm assuming this is more wanting to have just sort of an open workshop session as opposed to a workshop with a dedicated topic. So how does council feel about building that into a procedure rule, about having sort of two open topic, ask-me-anything-type workshops?
I mean, we want to listen to the residents, so I don't see that being an issue.
Okay.
Okay, so I think what we would do, it was suggested to add that on as a new Rule 57. I think thematically, it fits better to, as a sub-rule under Rule 7, which is city council workshops, so we'll add a, we'll draft a sub-rule about the two annual open workshops and bring that back when we bring the final version of the procedures for your review that incorporates all of the amendments you've arranged so far.
Yep.
Perfect. Did council have any other, any other questions about the rules of procedure? Okay, fantastic, and we'll make sure to get that draft over to the city manager's office and out to you well in advance, so you have time to read through all, all the revisions before we bring it back to council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just, okay, do we want to talk about the speed tables today? And let me tell you, I, so, go ahead, Ron, I'm just going to hand this out to people here. You can start it, and then I'm, I want to mention something about this.
Could you please bring up the presentation slide? So, as you're aware, Public Works was doing a routine maintenance on two of the speed tables that are in, on Marion Avenue. and this brought up a lot of conversation with citizens and with council at the twenty-first, May twenty-first council meeting. At that point in time, you had directed us to reconfigure the speed tables on the last two bridges, so that the tables were at the exit of the bridge. And we looked at it, all of the existing signage is adequate in its current location, so we'd just require installing the speed tables at the locations you proposed. And we are going to add one, the slow-speed sign to the top of each bridge. It's just a little bit of an extra warning, and it does not affect traffic at all. And so, the Gulfview Marion Avenue Speed Table, total cost on that one was twenty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-six. The Maria Court Marion Avenue relocation is eighteen thousand zero six zero. The Colony Point and Marion Avenue, that's the additional speed table that you wanted to add to the exit of the bridge, would be twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars. And, of course, Colony Point Marion was already part of the rehab that we had going on, so those, there's no additional cost in that. Total estimated cost would be sixty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for this work, and just asking for approval to move forward. I would also like to apologize for the cover sheet had an error on it, and it was a clerical error, and we've put a step in place that we're not going to have that problem again, so my apologies there.
No worries, it was just a little confusing. Is it okay if I just jump in with this? Because I sent something out. I was just thinking, you know, we were listening to the residents who were just saying that they did not want that, that speed table in front of their house, and really, where it is needed the most was actually at the other side of the bridge at Gulfview. So, I'm thinking if we don't replace the speed table right there at Maria Court, we can use that for the Gulfview, which would actually save us money, and not do anything at the Maria Court here. Did I not give that?
I don't know, here, I'm sure Ron doesn't have it today.
Right, I, I've got something, so I can give this to you. So, it, it actually saves us money, because we'd be saving...
So, there'll be one at Maria Court, you're saying?
No, take out the one, don't, don't replace Maria Court.
Do not replace it.
Do not, because that's not, where we need it is as you're going over the bridge to have people slow down, so people on Gulfview can come out. That's the, the safety issue. So, that's the spot where we want it, can, so instead of putting one on both spots, just keep, put the one on Gulfview. So, we don't have to put them in, on both Maria and Gulfview. And then, for Colony Point, yes, keep the two. So, I was just suggesting not to use, not to put one at Maria Court, basically is what this states, which actually saves us, what, another twenty thousand dollars? Does that make sense? You know, the people at Maria Court who, who lived there were complaining, because it was just noisy and everything like that. Well, that wasn't stopping people from speeding over that bridge to have people on Gulfview leave. So, that one, I think, can just stay, just keep the slow signs that say, hey, slow down, there's a speed bump ahead. And then, when they're coming over, they're going to have to slow down. Because people coming, and, and that's the same on Colony Point. As people are coming up over that bridge, you, it, it's, you think you're going to be clear, and then all of a sudden, you're coming out, and people are speeding over that, and there's a lot of near misses right there. It's, it's just a safety, safety thing. So, I, I would like to recommend not putting the speed bump at Maria Court, basically is all I'm saying.
You want them after the bridge, basically, on the way down?
That's what we, that's what we agreed for, but I'm just saying, we're agreeing, but just not adding the Maria Court back.
Okay.
Which, the residents were asking not to put that one back.
I'm fine with that.
I, I got that here for you, too, Ron.
And you're saying add a speed table at Colony Point?
That was already agreed last time, yes, because it's the same thing. As you come up over that bridge, people are speeding over it, and people coming off of Colony Point don't see them, and when people are speeding, there's a lot of near misses there. So, having one on both sides also helps prevent that from happening.
Does the asphalt at Colony Point need to be thickened?
It will need, it'll need to be thickened on the western side.
Right.
The eastern side's already been taken care of.
Right, they, they say Colony Point and Marion for both of them, one of them, I think, is DaVinci, should say DaVinci? How do you say that word, that road?
That's the, that's the other...
And that's the zero, and then the Colony Point and Marion is the one that's twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-three, which a lot of the residents on Colony Point have asked for that to be there, because it is, it's very dangerous for, for residents. And people are saying, well, turn right, same thing. When somebody's coming flying over the bridge, if you try to turn right, you're going to get rear-ended. Either way, it's a safety hazard. So, alls I'm saying is just remove the Maria Court and Marion Avenue one. And then, use the speed table and stock for the Gulfview Road.
Is that possible, Ron?
Yes, it is, just waiting for a gen, waiting for a general consensus, yes.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm good with that, I'm, I'm very good with that.
With the change? Do you want us to give you the motion with the change?
I just need the consensus to move forward, I don't know if it needs a motion.
Okay, do we have a consensus to move forward on this?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, are we up to our boards and committees? Hello again. So, for the boards and committees, we have, under announcement of vacancies, we have a contractor seat and an alternate seat open on the building board. We have one regular and two alternate seats open on the code enforcement board, and one regular seat on the general employees pension board. For nominations, we have an application for the Planning and Zoning Board alternate position. Ms. Sherri Roberts has expressed an interest and is eligible to serve. I believe she made an introduction earlier in the meeting. At this time, council may choose to nominate, nominate and appoint, or continue to announce the vacancy for this opening.
I don't think she, I don't think Sherri was here, it was Teresa Lee.
Oh, it was Teresa Lee, I'm sorry.
But then, also, we were just talking about going down to five and one. Does that change anything with the Planning and Zoning Board?
So, I, that is a good question, because I did note that when we talked about the makeup of the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, that all of those individuals currently occupy a regular seat.
And I think we do have an alternate seat on there, too.
Okay, so, if you would like, what we can do, just so that we, so that everybody's on the same page, I guess it would be the clerk's recommendation to continue this nomination to the August twentieth meeting, and at that point, we can determine what the makeup looks like, and if they, if we do need an alternate appointment right now, or if we have, if we have that taken care of. So, if you'll give the clerk's office a little bit of time to get everything squared away based on council's direction on the earlier agenda item, we can bring this back on the twentieth.
Perfect.
So, is there consensus of council to move this nomination to the twentieth? Okay. And we'll, of course, let Ms. Roberts know as well, so that she's kept in the loop about her application. And then, the other nomination item is for the Punta Gorda Housing Authority, one tenant member. That was the, the lady that was here earlier. Ms. Teresa Lee has expressed an interest in serving and is eligible to do so. I did want to clarify, just in case anybody was reviewing the cover page and got a little confused. So, Ms. Janira Perez had been previously appointed to fill this seat, not that long ago, and then she subsequently resigned, so that's why this was back open. And I think when we were moving that agenda item over, her name got left on the cover page, so I did want to say that it is, in fact, Teresa Lee who is applying for that opening, and is being considered for nomination today.
I'm, should I make a motion?
You can make a nomination.
Yes, I'd like to nominate and appoint and nominate Teresa Lee.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have any reports?
Oh, I did just want to briefly, under the comments, request clarification, and I apologize, I know someone asked this earlier, but I was typing in another spot. Can council please just confirm the vote for the, for appointing Dr. Reichert as the permanent city manager? Was that a...
Three, and I think Greg never said yes or no.
That's correct.
You abstained, Mr. Julian? Okay, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate that. Okay, and then the only other thing I wanted to mention was, based on Mr. Higgins' comment during public comments about the email that his wife, who sits on the code enforcement board, received, I did ask Sarah to go ahead and reach out to Ms. Higgins to discuss that, and to let everybody know that we do have an exemption form that is available for board members. They're told about it during their training, that if they, if they meet an exemption under state statute to have their personal information redacted, they need to submit that form. It's unfortunately, because of the way the statute is written, it's not something that the clerk's office has the authority to do by default. That has to be made in request by the board member, and we can put together some information to share at board meetings about how to do that in case board members have forgotten that that's an option, or aren't sure about how to get that done. But, we will investigate that issue and make sure that if she does qualify for, for an exemption, that we get that form on file, if that's what she'd like to do.
Is the option to give them city email addresses viable?
That I, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, but that would be something that we'd have to run through city manager and IT, because then that would be, you know, you're talking about roughly forty to fifty additional email addresses that would need to be maintained and, and all of that, so. But it's, I'm sure it's something we could discuss.
We'll have conversations with IT, but at this, initially, I think it's a really good idea, and if we can make it happen, we will.
Yes, and, and I do know for a fact that there are neighboring municipalities that provide board members with city IDs, or city email addresses to sort of deal with that issue. So, we'll, we'll certainly look into that, and we'll discuss with the boards about the exemption process if they need to. Thank you.
Okay, oh, I think we can scratch off intra-city managers.
Okay, I have great news to report from Public Works, they've been doing amazing work, as always. We'll have a new shade structure at Hounds on Henry Park, that'll be finished shortly, they've been working on that. Crews are cleaning up Ponce Park, trimming, filling holes. They finished painting the bathrooms, they look a lot better out there. The parking garage seams are being sealed, we've got electric panels repaired on Linear Park, Harborwalk lights restored from Myla Street to the courthouse. So, every day, those lighting improvements are moving forward. Just want to remind council and the public that we have workshops scheduled in September on the ninth, that's regarding code enforcement, and on the twenty-third, about permitting. Those will be at five o'clock in the evening at the Lashley Community Room. I talked a little bit about this at the pre-agenda meeting. Burnt Store Coalition has requested letters of support for their burnt store action plan. They'll be applying for a planning grant, and I just need consensus from council to go ahead and write that letter of support and send it on behalf of council.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. I also had a request to put an item on an upcoming agenda to discuss the farmer's market. This item would look at whether or not we want to consider potentially bidding out that space or that service to the city. We could talk about all the options if we have it as an agenda item.
Yes.
I'd like that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Do you recall back on April second, you waived the signing of the pre-annexation agreement for the facility located on airport property? I need to clarify that, was this your intent to waive the signing for all facilities that will be located on that airport property? They have another facility coming online, the Charlotte County Technical College Aviation Facility, and they're wondering if they, if that actually encompassed all of the facilities that they'll be placing on that property, or if you only intended it to be for just the one, then we'll have to have it brought back before you.
For all of them, or for the one? That's the, the pre-annexation signage that, with the airport people?
Yes, so they have, they're going to have another facility, they'll, they'll have several, they'll be more than just this next one. Do we want each individual ask of waiving of that agreement to come before them, or did you consider that a, a blanket of all of the airport property?
I feel like they're all tax exempt. If they're tax exempt...
It should, it should be all encompassing, I think.
There's no possibility of other development out in that area that's not tax exempt? I wouldn't want to make it blanket.
I think it's airport-owned property that we're talking about.
Yes, specifically airport-owned property.
I guess it applies to all of it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I have that direction then. Let's see, covered all of these. We have some great employee accolades, again, this one for the canal maintenance team of Jose and Brian. Public Works recently received a heartfelt compliment from the homeowners on Via Tripoli, recognizing the exceptional efforts of Jose and Brian from the Canal Maintenance Department. The team was called to address a large waterlogged dock box that had been lodged under the homeowner's deck since Hurricane Milton. Jose and Brian demonstrated impressive teamwork and professionalism in carefully removing the dock box, which had the potential to become a hazard in the canal. Their dedication and attention to detail did not go unnoticed, and the homeowners were thoroughly impressed with their performance. In a lighthearted moment, the homeowners joked that Jose and Brian could keep the jewelry and coins discovered in the treasure chest they recovered. "We appreciate Jose and Brian for their outstanding work and commitment to keeping our waterways safe and our residents satisfied. Well done."
Awesome.
We received an accolade for Ricky Platt with sanitation. Public Works recently received a compliment from Mr. Patrick Hope regarding the outstanding assistance provided by Mr. Platt. He went, Mr. Platt went above and beyond in visiting Mr. Hope to clarify the city's yard waste collection rules. Despite the heavy rain, Mr. Platt took the time to follow up and provide clear and helpful guidance. Mr. Hope expressed his appreciation, noting how fortunate he feels to live in a community where people generally, genuinely look out for one another. So, thank you, Ricky Platt. And then, a community group that one of our Public Works employees, Laurel Adelman, just happened to notice when she, she brought it to my attention. The Punta Gorda Girlfriends Facebook group went out and they cleaned up two sites in the city of Punta Gorda, and they collected a total of thirty-one bags of trash. So, we absolutely appreciate the work of the Punta Gorda Girlfriends, and the, they called theirselves Trashy Tuesday was the event that they held, and, and just did a phenomenal job helping us with cleanup, so we thank them, that's all I have.
That's awesome. Asaskevich?
First off, Dr. Reichert, I want to say congratulations to you.
Thank you, sir.
Which brings up an interesting point, your charter, I bring this to all of you since it kind of came up. Your charter indicates your city manager, at the time of appointment, does not need to reside in the city limits, but upon taking tenure as city manager, has to reside within city limits. I know you guys approved a six-month extension for Dr. Reichert to be able to move within city limits. It may be something you want to consider about amending the charter by election that provides for that provision, or just take it by, you know, case-by-case basis. I know when your previous city manager was here, he purchased a home as Mr. Koenig was still in office. It really wasn't an issue. But it brings up an issue here, on how you guys want to proceed with that, moving forward. And not that Dr. Reichert's going to quit tomorrow, but should she do so, you know, then you're caught in a predicament again. So, it may be something you guys want to look into for amending your charter somewhere down the road. Or just keep it in terms of contract negotiation, or how you guys do that. Secondly, I had court this morning for the R.J. Gorman case. We were, we stipulated and agreed to removing the R.J. Gorman lawsuit off of the expedited track, which means if the case was going to go to trial, it would be going to trial in December of this year. Because of the amount in question, potentially over seven figures, as well as the, a number of witnesses and exhibits and experts that may be called upon, we removed it from the expedited track, put it onto a general track, which then could take up to about two years to come to resolution, if it gets into a trial position. Hopefully, it doesn't get that far. I had received a here, or I had received here just recently what's called a notice of interrogatories, which is going to need staff to answer some questions regarding the lawsuit, just to give you guys an update with that. Those have to be filled out by staff, and I know they've already, I think, directed out to them already. I believe that is all I have for now.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Julian?
I would just like to also congratulate Dr. Reichert.
I would just like to also congratulate Dr. Reichert.
Anything else?
Nope. Actually, I have one more thing. Uh, while I was sitting here, I need you guys to check your city of Punta Gorda emails. Uh, we received a document preservation letter regarding the repeal of the, um, LDRs from last week. Dr. Reichert, I just forwarded it to you as well, because I didn't see you included in the, uh, letter that was sent to us.
So you want us to look at this right now?
No, you don't need to look at it right now, but just make sure you take a look at it.
Okay.
Uh, in regards to what's going on.
Okay. Janine?
Uh, just congratulations, Dr. Reichert, and, um, I, I think you're the perfect fit for the job, I really do. And I, I appreciate everything you've done the last nine months. You've been incredible. Thank you. That's all I have.
I, I echo that. We wouldn't be where we are today. Um, I, I heard gentlemen talking about the, um, rebar, the composite rebars, which is crazy, because I was going to bring up again, I know at one time, we were talking about that there was a study at one time with the final C-Wall study, we were going to take a look at that. I still would like to bring that up again, because I think there is a huge cost savings. Again, I'm not the expert in that, but, um, I would like to have that come forward along with the rebar, the composite rebar. One of the things I also hope in the future, um, oh, if it's okay, is everybody okay with that?
Yes, just to discuss it and have it on.
Discuss it, yeah.
Sure.
Because I think it's good education for us, too. Um, the other thing I would like to, um, put on the agenda at some point, I know we're going to be talking about all the properties that we have and, you know, what we're leasing and stuff like that. I personally like to have it a little bit more detailed. How much does it cost us to have? How much revenue are, are we receiving off of it? We really have to figure out our, you know, a dollar a year leases are, are not sustainable for us as a city. And with saying that, you know, I don't know if there's anything legality we can look at, some of these leases that we have very long contracts with. But I, I've noticed, um, coming here several times, our public parking right by, behind the bank, behind the post office as we're coming in, always has vehicles there. So is that public parking, or is that parking just for some employees there? And if it's just parking for some employees there, and we're maintaining it and doing everything, is it time that we should consider looking at selling it or doing something different with that again? I, I think that's something that we should be looking at again, when we're looking at all our land. That's just the one, um, I, I thought about. Also, um, noticed like out at, in our, everywhere that we have public parking, should we limit the hours that people are parking? I know it puts a little bit of burden, but if we got that really cool ticket thing, it might help us out, but, um, I noticed a vehicle, um, at Lashley, when we have our pre-agenda meetings, we've been having our meetings, has been there for well over a month. And I don't think we should be considering our public parking as parking lots for people. So I, I think that's something that we should be looking into as well. I agree, I, I think that we need to look into, when we were talking again, about what we're going to do with the marina, figuring out some fees with, with how we can actually maintain our marina, finding the money, because that is a huge, our, our city is based on boating, so we really need to figure out a way to fix Lashley as, as quickly as possible. I think we had a great workshop, it was amazing. I loved listening to all the residents. Um, I'm going to have another gathering with the small businesses, I told them that as well, it's going to be at Celtic Ray two, two o'clock on Tuesday, July fifteenth. It's just a great way, I think right now, we listen to them, and I don't want it to stall, we were just listening to them, I want to look at us starting to take action to see. I think that the city can aid, I don't expect us to be the parents, I expect them to, like, take over, but I think if they get something going, we can embrace and try to help them as best as we can, i.e., like, site on the city website or something. Reeds Across America, July nineteenth, that's an event that's going on. I forgot to bring my flyer, but if anybody's interested in, I think it's really a, a great cause. It's something that we actually lay the wreaths here at our cemetery, um, at Indian Hills. Am I saying that? Indian Hills? Indian Springs Cemetery. Sorry, I was going to say Indian Springs, no, it's Indian House. And then, um, Ms. Connie Payne asked me to, um, put out, they have a John Lewis Day of Action on July seventeen. It's at the Congregational United Church of Christ on Akiesta from four thirty to eight o'clock PM. She asked me if I would announce that. One last thing, we kind of did state that, um, this morning, when we had the joint meeting, I was hoping that we had comments for each other, because I think it's really important for us as city council members to have communication with our commissioners, instead of having just our city managers talking to each other. I think it's important that we talk to each other, and it's out in public, what we're discussing, instead of everything being behind closed doors. I know we've been very good as a council to be very transparent, thank you again, Dr. Reichert, for that. And I'm just stating to the commissioners that, and he's like, well, we've done this late, well, you're just telling us about the nine-one-one system, that change is good. Well, guess what? Let's start having good change with our commissioners and our city council as well.